Enough of this. I call to order the Thursday, March 15th, meeting of the Los Altos Planning Commission. For the record, show that all commissioners currently sitting are here. We have six of the seven. Our seventh position is vacant. I'm now going to ask if anybody is in the audience who would like to speak on an issue which is not on our agenda. Seeing none, I will close that part of the hearing, and we will now move into the items for consideration. The first is our consent calendar, and the first item on the consent calendar is our minutes of... Minutes of the last meeting, which was...
[laughing]
Got it. Of March, Thursday, March 1st. Does anybody have any comments or corrections or modifications they'd like to make to this?
Yes.
Go for it, Mr. McTuck.
On page two, I was committed to say that I stated the bike map needed to be updated noting there is only one bike rail on Lot 5. What I was saying was, there should be one bike lot either on State Street or Lot 5.
Okay.
Not both.
Okay.
And then, my comment on the second page, or page three.
Page three.
Where says Commissioner Bodnar noted that the threshold for parcels that could participate in the In-Lu program should be at 15,000 square feet. I think what I was saying was that there is disparate treatment for parcels in the In-Lu program, depending on the square footage.
Oh, you're saying it's desirable, or there...
Yeah, I still think that they should be included in the In-Lu program, so that doesn't...
Okay, so what would you like your statement to be of the record here?
It should say, Commissioner Bodnar noted that the In-Lu program identified disparate treatment for parcels that could participate in an In-Lu program, depending on square footage, with 15,000 square feet being the point of differentiation. However, I do think that we should include parcels above 15,000.
Well, we are going to have a discussion about this. That's one of our items, but I wanted to mention...
Right. This is the opposite of that.
Okay, so, John, are you clear about the change on this one?
I am.
Other comments?
Yes. In that same general vicinity, two lines up...
Commissioner Meadows?
Commissioner Meadows, yes, recommended the formation of a standing parking committee, rather than standard, and I think I said committee or commission.
Okay. Nita, Alex?
Is there anybody else asking? I would like to make the recommendation that we adopt the minutes as changed.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We pass six, nothing. The minutes have been adopted. Okay, the next item on our agenda is discussion, and it's about citywide parking, and we have a report and a PowerPoint presentation from Mr. Biggs.
Thank you very much, Chair Bresik. John Biggs with the Community Development Department, members of the Planning Commission. I do have a PowerPoint presentation for you this evening. I'm hoping that the technology works a little bit better than your meeting on March 1st, but we will see. See if the schooling I received helps any. At your meeting of the March 1st, you took a look at some draft language for a parking ordinance, and you had a number of suggestions to incorporate into a draft ordinance that we could bring back to you for consideration. We have done that, and so the ordinance that is part of the packet today of the commission includes minimums for off-street parking standards, an In-Lu fee program, parking stall dimension standards, and it does have a office parking ratio standard that's been highlighted in yellow in the ordinance, but I think that was a question that some of the commissioners had and wanted more information on. There were some remaining questions, including the lot size for parcels that are eligible for the In-Lu fee program. There were some comments and questions about the parking space credit of 2.86 per thousand square feet, and then there was also a question about the appropriate In-Lu fee. I will note for the In-Lu fee that the ordinance includes that that fee be set by a resolution of the City Council, so it's something you can make a recommendation on, but ultimately, the council will decide what that fee should be. And as the Parking Committee recommended, the fee should be set at $20,000. And then for our downtown visioning efforts, we did have a recommendation from Economic Consultants part of the Downtown Visioning Team that indicated the fee should be between $25,000 and $30,000. You asked also that I provide some information to you that I was able to collect from some other cities, and I was in contact with a few other cities in the area that I thought had similar characteristics, and I sent a table out by email to all of you, and I have printed copies of that as well. The one thing that was fairly interesting to me in collecting some of the data for In-Lu fees from the various cities was that they're all very different, and they all have a different way they went about developing the fees. So one thing that I went and did was I contacted an economist that has a little bit of expertise in developing In-Lu fees for parking in cities. And it was interesting, the kind of approach that he said the city should take if it wanted to determine an appropriate fee that's going to cover what's anticipated in terms of development activity in the downtown or another area of the city, and then provide the funds that are needed to provide any anticipated or projected parking improvements. So kind of his process for establishing the fee, would he would look at what the anticipated level of activity is projected for an area, and then based on that, he would then go back and look at what the anticipated amount of development is, you know, a comparison of the square footage of total development in an area by, you know, retail use and office use, personal service use and so forth. Then he would take a look at the parking ratios that the city had established, and then evaluate the type of parking structure that the city wanted to put in place, whether it be a above-ground structure, below-ground structure, to come up with a cost roughly for parking space. And then using that information, he would use that to determine what the In-Lu fee would be, and then one of the policy questions for the fee would be, you know, what level of government sort of support for a parking structure would the community want to provide? So that's just kind of a little bit of an aside on how an economist would go about trying to assess the appropriate fee for In-Lu parking. I'll go back one... One item I didn't include on this list of the PowerPoint slide is, again, you had some questions about the parking ratio for office uses. The table that I provided to the commissioners did have some parking ratios for office uses, and kind of like In-Lu parking, it really depended on the city and how the city went about determining where the parking was in relation to its downtown or other areas of town, or even areas of the town that might be governed by a specific plan. So you can see the range of parking spaces in the document that I provided to the commission there. There were other recommendations of the commission that weren't related to a ordinance draft, so what I've done in your packet is have included a resolution of the Planning Commission that you could recommend being forwarded to the Planning Commission that memorializes your recommendation regarding... Recommendations, that is, regarding bicycle parking facilities, an inventory of downtown spaces and opportunities for additional parking, and then timed parking opportunities. And then the resolution also includes whatever recommendation you make to the City Council in terms of an ordinance, one of the components of that resolution is your recommendation on the parking ordinance. So you have it all in one package and memorializes everything that you're recommending on the City Council.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Could we properly sever that resolution to complete the top three and not do the fourth one tonight, or can we not take any action tonight because of the notice situation?
You could take and separate out those recommendations and save the recommendation for the actual parking ordinance to a later resolution. You could certainly separate them.
Thank you.
One last... One or two last slides on the screen. These are the parking ratios. I thought we might have that up for the commission to refer back to if you need to, and for the audience to take a look at, since we didn't have it up on the screen at the last meeting. I believe the day or the day after the Planning Commission meeting, or maybe the second day after the last Planning Commission meeting, we sent you copies of the tables that had all of the footnotes attached, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at those footnotes and have your questions answered about where some of the data was coming from. And then the last slide here is the parking of the downtown. It shows you a good reference of the parking plazas in the downtown and in the boundary of the downtown parking district. So with that, I'll wrap up my presentation and entertain any questions that the commission has.
There was another page. Are you not going to speak to that?
Oh, there is. That was just another reference point.
Your mic is...
Just another reference slide. It's the reference to the office parking requirement or suggestion... Actually, take that back. It's the recommendations of the economists for the downtown visioning project on what their recommendations are for a parking ratio for all uses except for hotel uses. And for hotel uses, they're recommending a ratio of .8 to one parking space per hotel sleeping room. Okay?
Okay, I'd like to remind everybody to turn off their cellphones from making noise while we're sitting here. Anybody else have questions for John before we start?
I had a question for John, and because 15,000 square feet is being used as some model, I was curious what would make... What current structures would be 15,000 square feet? Is that like 170 square... Or 170 State Street? Is that...
You're looking at sites in the downtown like the Dreggers property, First Street Properties. I'm looking at some information that came in to the commission this afternoon. The First Street Properties that were assembled by Lacy, the Wells Fargo Bank property, 170 State Street, as you mentioned, the Commercial Bank property, and the Walgreens property, as a way of reference.
This is a paper.
Are there asking questions about the presentation or the ordinance?
I'm asking questions to clarify the presentation, and then we'll go through the different items that are earmarked for further discussion or enhanced discussion from our previous start. Nothing else of that, because then I have one that's procedural that I'd like to ask John. On the second page of your agenda report summary, where we have the draft ordinance, somewhere at the next to the last paragraph, it says that, given that there was only one week between the March 1st commission meeting and when the packet had to be sent out, the city attorney hasn't had a chance to review the draft ordinance. So that means that the public hearing on the draft ordinance will need to be held later. So tonight is discussion point to tweak the draft ordinance if we so are inclined, but we won't actually be making a recommendation to council tonight on it.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, does tonight even count? Has it technically been introduced, and we have to then do a notice for the second reading, or is... Have we technically not even had an introduction?
You technically have not scheduled a public hearing because that requires a notification in the paper, and so even though we've had this on in the agenda for this meeting and a lot of different meetings, the official public hearing hasn't... In front of the Planning Commission, hasn't been held because you don't have the notice that's been posted.
Okay, and we only have to do one hearing, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and the reason the notice wasn't posted is because we haven't had attorney review yet.
Attorney review, and there wasn't sufficient time between your last meeting and this meeting to get the notice in the paper and meet the posting deadline.
Okay, so, what John has done in his report is he has, in the agenda report summary, he has identified four pieces that we started to discuss and kind of ran out of time or didn't come to a consensus about. And those are, I'm going to list them in order that they're here, the 15,000 square foot or size parcel, and how that fits into the In-Lu. The second is the In-Lu fee amount, what we want to recommend to City Council with some kind of basis. In the PowerPoint just now, we pointed out there were two different approaches to begin with, plus a theoretical one from the economist about the factors that one would take into account if you're an economist. And the second I skipped over is the ratio of the parking space credit at 2.86 per thousand square feet. And then the last is the onsite ratio for office parking, for which we have an additional parking requirement data of select cities documented. It's a table that we received before this meeting. So since we started, because Mike asked a question about which parcels were relevant to the 15,000-foot threshold, and since Renita also had a thought about that relative to the minutes, why don't we start with that particular item?
How about public comment now?
Oh, pardon me, and if there's... Pardon me. When we start, we will start with that item, but before that, we will ask for public comment, for which I have three requests to speak, and the first one is David Rock.
And...
And here's a fourth.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to offer the possibility for the chair's consideration that since we could take action on a resolution that covers items 1, 2, and 3 tonight, that maybe we consider actually doing that?
Let me hear the public comment, and then let's explore that, okay?
Okay.
So, public comment. Thank you for being patient, David.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Rock, 150 University Avenue.
So, John, can you make sure the mic's on? Thank you.
That'll be a lot easier.
And so, try it again. David Rock. Can you, like, hit the thing up? No, up, up.
Vertical.
Vertical. Vertical. So I'm not bending over. Even better. Yeah. I'm trying to help you. Oh, that little thing. Yeah, I know. Now we've got the technical difficulties out of the way. I still live at 150 University Avenue, Los Altos. Unfortunately, I was... Fortunately for me, but unfortunately for the process, I was out of town at the March... Wasn't able to attend the March 1st meeting, but did view the tape a good number of times, and the... Wanted just to make sure that everyone... John said he sent out the memorandum. My apologies from the former members for getting it to you so late, but we wanted to try to comment back on the observations and questions that came from the last meeting. Also wanted to just state that it's important to point out that the ratios recommended by the CWPC are based on the actual occupancy data recorded in Los Altos during all the different parking studies, and specifically, two reports completed in 2009 and 2013, and I urge everyone to use the real data rather than anecdotal feelings that we all sort of receive from friends and neighbors about how I tried to park and because I couldn't park exactly at the building I wanted to park at. We have a huge parking problem. And also, that I'm going to stay, I don't know about anybody else, but I'll be here for the meeting, for the duration of the meeting if there's questions that come up. Be glad if... Procedural, it's possible, be glad to answer those questions. One final thing on the issue of the different options that we proposed for paying the parking In-Lu fee. Part of the reason for that was that we were mindful of the fact that many times landlords will in some way be passing on that fee to the merchants, and we all want to try to attract good retailers and restaurants, and some towns have found that with the parking In-Lu fee and the way it might be passed through in terms of a deal structure, that the restaurants especially, because they're putting in such a big capital amount of between $400,000 and $1,500,000, they like to see if they can pay things in a monthly basis or an annual base, you know, basically over time instead of an lump sum. So we were sort of... I mean, we were coming from that angle as well as, it wasn't just the developer. It's the combination of the developer and the tenant that we were looking at in terms of trying to give more than just a lump sum option, and so I wanted just to make that clear well. I had a chance at public comment, so. Thank you.
I'd like to ask David a question.
Sure.
Is your mic on?
It's on.
Okay.
With respect to the lots that are larger than 15,000 square feet, in the last meeting, I had said that builders are going... Are not going to abdicate responsibility for all parking, that they have a self-motivated interest to park. In your experience, since you're in the leasing business, can you talk about that? And specifically, if in other towns where they do allow parking In-Lu for large-sized lots, what has been your experience in terms of how much they...
It's good.
Use the parking In-Lu versus how much they actually build themselves?
Right. It's a very good question. My partner and I do leasing throughout the Bay Area on both this side of the Bay and the other side, and I've been doing it since 1980s, oh my God, 31 years. I didn't get gray just by chance. And the answer is that I've almost never seen a developer look to the parking In-Lu fee for all of their parking. It makes the particular development unattractive unless it's a kind of an oddball situation like a hotel where you have a very different parking situation, especially with Uber now and Lyft, in terms of people's need for parking. But in terms of commercial developments, office residential, I mean, office, retail, and actually even multifamily, they... I would say the model is that at least 50% of the parking is supplied by the landlord in terms of parking. It's unusual that all of it would be on that large building. I'm talking about 15,000 square feet or more. 20,000 square foot center, whether it's multi-use or just office, or a combination of office and retail, 40,000, 50,000, those sort of small strippers or strip centers, as we call them, they will want to have parking for leaseability, especially if there's retail and office, and not just for... You know, it really depends on the size of the building. The smaller buildings is a different story, but the larger buildings in that 15,000 to, say, 100,000 square foot range, it's unusual that they would go all to parking In-Lu fees.
Thank you.
Does that answer you?
Okay.
Great. Thanks again for all your time on this.
Next is Roberta Phillips.
Hi, I'm Roberta Phillips. I've been resident here for about 30 years. Hi. And my concern is making the parking spaces smaller, because I know that my husband, who's 78, needs to open up his car door all the way so he can put both feet on the ground so that he can stand up. I have friends that have small children with a car seat in the back, and dogs, and they really have trouble, you know, unless they can open their car door. They cannot get out of the car and try to manipulate picking up a child and opening up a baby carriage. And it's lovely to have the size parking spots that we have. At least half the cars in town are SUVs. They're not, you know, everybody would like for us to go to smaller ecological cars, but that's not what we have here. We have larger cars, and I personally just don't want my car dinged up, and I know nobody else does. So I think restriping the parking lot means more than just restriping. It means taking out the trees and the concrete barriers, and, you know, it is an expensive process to do. I've heard May Mordo say, "I never have a problem finding a parking space downtown." I personally do not have a problem. Maybe there are other people that do have problems parking downtown, but my big concern is making the parking spots smaller. I just think it's way too difficult, and, you know, the 25% of our population are seniors, and then our younger people still have trouble. You know, it's only the skinny, middle-aged people that can get out of their car. So please consider that. You know, it is something that will be a very inconvenient... Big inconvenience to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Roberta?
Roberta.
No, thank you. No, thank you, Roberta.
Okay, any question?
The next speaker is Kim Cranston.
Is this set correctly? Good evening, Commissioners. It's Kim Cranston, Los Alamos Hills. Honestly, I really appreciate that you're moving this forward. I wanted to amplify a little bit on what David said about the reason to have different ways that people can pay In-Lu fees. I own several properties in town. I have a few restaurants. I haven't been... Because I'm in the original parking district, I haven't been required to provide additional parking, but I can see how it would be an issue for people outside of the district, or for people inside the district that may decide to add a floor and perhaps a restaurant. And the challenge would be, I think restaurants are really where things are going. I really try to recruit restaurants when I have a vacancy. Lulu's is one of my properties, and I spent a year to recruit them. When a new restaurant comes in, if there's not gas, my experience has been, and David probably has better details, you're talking about half a million dollars in tenant improvements. If you add on top of that having to pay a flat In-Lu fee of 20,000 per additional space, you're probably going to kill a lot of deals. A factor playing into this that most restaurants, as I understand it, if they are a new restaurant operated by somebody who's never run a restaurant before, their chance of succeeding is about 20 to 30%. If somebody's opening a restaurant that has opened one before, I think their chance of succeeding may be about 50, 60%. And so they're kind of rolling the dice, and one of the... Part of the negotiation, part of the consideration would be, do they need to pay 20 times five, or 10, or however many additional spaces they need to move in, and that, I think, would kill a lot of deals. I think it's better to enable them to pay on a monthly or an annual basis as the Grille does. They pay an annual fee for the parking that they use in the plazas, and that has, I think, enabled them to make it work economically. So I really hope that you'll look at including those other modes of payment. And frankly, from my perspective, if I were on the city's side, I'd say, well, I'd rather have 20,000 upfront or 2,000 a year for the next X years. It doesn't end when they've paid the 20, it just keeps going. If that were a personal investment opportunity I could make, I'd rather have 2,000 a year for X years than 20 upfront. Anyway, those are my comments, and I'll stick around in case you have any comment or questions that I'm able to help clarify, particularly from the In-Lu parking perspective. Thank you.
Questions for Kim? No. Last speaker will be Bill Mastin.
It just seems like we're being so efficient after the three meetings we've all been through together. Anyway, I just wanted to talk about a couple things, and I put it in a little memo this afternoon. I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but for those that are at home, maybe they'll benefit as well. The question... One of the questions that was raised at the last meeting was why the city would want to charge more than or less than what it actually costs the city to provide additional parking. And my experience has been in two ways. Well, first of all, I actually was surprised to find out that it's illegal for a city to charge you more than it costs, so that takes care of the first thing. But effectively, if you don't provide an In-Lu fee, it's just the status quo. We get no change. We get nothing new happening in town. So the last issue just comes down to...
How much?
What are the benefits of providing an incentive by charging less than what the actual cost is? Well, it's... Depends on your point of view. There will be people that actually say, hey, that's an incentive to a developer. That's not fair. But on the other side, from the city's point of view, that incentive is not only encouraging new development, but it's doing two other things. It's actually helping raise the real estate tax base over time, which allows the city to collect more taxes. It also increases the retail tax that's collected by the city as well. So over time, the city actually makes more money through taxes than they did if they did nothing, where you have declining retail sales and declining value in real estate. So that's really the whole emphasis behind why you might choose to actually charge less. And of course, that becomes a policy decision of the council, but of course, I think the logic would hopefully prevail where you would encourage the actual fee to be less than what the actual cost is. So the second thing that was discussed that I wanted to talk about was really related to the benefits indirectly of having the... to the benefits indirectly of having the white dot program. When you expand the program of having the parking district expand outside of the original boundaries, it's bringing into the fold two things. One, more people participating in the program. But the second thing is, in La Saldas in particular, we have the benefit of a lot of underutilized parking. Believe it or not, between thirty to fifty percent of all the parking spaces that exist outside of the, the triangle, I mean, the downtown, but within the triangle, are underutilized. So that means we could have white dot people leasing spaces through the city in lieu program and free up the white dot spaces that are currently downtown in the core. So some great benefits could be had there, and if I could answer any questions, I'm happy to do that.
I just wanted to point out that there's a tiny typo on this well-prepared document where it says, many parking spaces that currently go unused, not on-used.
Oops.
Because I thought if someone was looking at it when it's on the website, it might be better if it was clear, but you made it clear verbally. I just thought I'd point that out.
Great.
Questions for Bill? Okay.
Thank you.
With no other, other than our council member, no one else is here to speak, I think I can close the public hearing. Boom. Okay. Anita, what you were asking was, we have a draft resolution for the council on not ordinance items, outside of the ordinance items, and except for the fourth one in the resolution, which says that we, resolution that the city council should adopt the draft ordinance, we could in fact segregate those three items and make that resolution before we do our discussion. Is that what you were saying?
I believe that to be the case. That's what I asked Mr. Biggs earlier, and that's what I believe he said, right? So I think we could truncate after three and move on those, and then we'd have done something, and then we can have our discussion.
What an idea.
Do I see a consensus here that we should get an item done?
So should I make a motion?
Well, actually, let's check.
Well, let's at least give it a moment.
So this, the point is, we have this resolution that if there is a consensus, I'll take a little straw poll, whether we could resolve that the planning commission recommend that the complete streets commission is the appropriate body to evaluate identifying planned bicycle parking facilities, that staff of appropriate city departments could develop an inventory and map of downtown parking, so we would have an accurate
I think that needs to say on-street.
On-street, pardon me. Of the downtown, oh, wait a minute, develop an inventory and map of downtown parking?
I think, I think we intended it to mean on-street, because we were talking about how to shift things around.
On-street, yes, we add those words, downtown parking, et cetera. And then the third one is that the staff of appropriate city departments review and seek opportunities to increase the timed parking supply
Mm-hmm.
to find places where timed parking does not currently exist.
Does, does that capture, does that third one capture the idea of changing the loading zone?
No.
That was my, that's my only question.
I think it's too broad. It sort of suggests find anywhere in our downtown where we want to start making it timed, and that seems like a policy, I mean, I feel like that's been, that has been discussed and, and not
Were you specifically looking, Anita, for the loading zone?
That's what we talked about last time, was specifically
Okay.
A loading zone.
The, looking at prohibiting loading zone usage for loading purposes during peak midday.
Eleven to, or something.
It's eleven, I think it's eleven to two.
I think this was more to what Alex was talking about, which was timed parking in front of the residential area.
Yeah, in which case we've lost the notion of the parking
The loading zone.
The loading zones, so
I swear, I read that somewhere.
Well, we have a lot of reports, I'm not, I'm sure you read it somewhere. Because I keep finding that when I go through
And I, if you're going to take a straw poll, I would support number three as written for the purposes that Alex raised. I just don't want to get the, I don't want the loading zone thing to get lost, because I think there was also consensus, I think there was consensus about that as well. And maybe that should replace number four.
And I want to talk about number three. I know it, it passed last time, but I want to explain, I think Ronita and I were not in favor of number three. I wanted to explain, the reason I wasn't in favor of it, not because it isn't a good idea and that we shouldn't get to it eventually, but I felt it came in sort of from left field. It wasn't part of the parking committee recommendations, and therefore it was somehow getting fast-tracked, whereas there might be other things within the parking committee recommendations that we'd actually rate higher than this idea. So I felt that it is a good idea, and it could well yield something, but I felt somehow it ended up getting prioritized over us actually looking at some of the other things that we hadn't been discussing in the last two meetings. So that's why I wasn't in favor of number three.
I had the same, same thought. I mean, timed parking is, if you, if you read a book on, by parking experts, they all suggest that that is the best way to get the most out of your parking, but it's a really, it's a bigger concept.
It wasn't low hanging fruit, that was
It was not low hanging fruit.
So the way it's written, it's the idea that play, in residential zones, is that what I heard you say earlier?
I think they're suggesting that we remove it altogether, replace it with loading
Loading zone, but I, I understood that. What I was trying to do is get clarity, since Sally was not saying that she objected to it in principle as an idea, what she was saying is, it, the speed in which it got put in this resolution was maybe the, the flipping of the loading zone, which was definitely low-holding, low-hanging fruit, which we are pretty much all in agreement with about the loading zones not being used as loading zones during peak need at the midday. I wanted to make sure that I was clear when we were pulling it out, what it was I was pulling out, which was that they seek opportunities to increase the timed parking supply in those areas of the downtown where timed parking does not presently exist in residential
So to me, this number three is written exactly as it should be if we're talking, because I think whether it's residential off, like wherever it is
Okay.
So
So this is
It's just a matter of, I think, if you're going to talk about loading zone, then it probably just needs to be slightly more specific to say, change loading zone to no parking from eleven to two, or whatever it is. And then, again, procedurally, I don't know where this belongs, but
We can go back in discussion. I don't think we have a problem with that, at least because we, it was something that was brought up in the previous meeting. So if we're going to do a resolution to city council, it will be on items one, item two, which with the words of, and map of the on-street downtown parking. So that's clear, that's what we're looking for. And the third item will be, I guess, does this, at the staff of appropriate city departments review and review the concept of changing loading zone timing to remove it from the eleven to two prime time parking areas?
Yeah, I think, I think you could make it read that staff of appropriate city departments review and evaluate
Okay. Well, I could say changing the loading, the availability of loading zones during peak hours.
I was going to say whether to prohibit loading zone use during eleven to two.
Okay. And eleven to two is what we think is the
That's what the, that's what the committee
That's our peak time.
Identified, and that's what CDM Smith identified, and so
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that.
So John, are you okay with that language? In that case, I'll entertain a motion
John, you need to hit the, there you go. That would be a separate inclusion or separate number.
Okay, so I will entertain a resol, a, a motion to res, to send a resolution to city council on the three items we just
Can I ask, so, so the third item becomes not
Is the loading zone.
Is just the loading zone?
Just the loading zone.
Okay.
And four, item four is deleted.
Item four is deleted.
So I'd like to make a recommendation to city council that we recommend to them the first three items that were presented.
As, number three as revised, well, number two and three as revised, actually.
Right.
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
All? No, we passed six, nothing. So we have accomplished something.
Okay.
But what we have left over from this is we have, at some point, we will have to make a resolution that they adopt the draft amendments, but that's not going to happen at this meeting anyway, so, but
Doesn't that just happen by us recommending the ordinance?
Yes.
I mean, it doesn't
There's always a separate
No, we need the comments.
We have a separate
And we'll need public comment. And so then, the one that's still holding for discussion as not being immediate low hanging fruit is whether the staff should review and seek opportunities to increase timed parking, timed parking spaces everywhere they can and come back with a report. And we'll just go through now, get back to my original concept, which is, the first item under discussion is the fifteen thousand square foot minimum is the largest parcel size that could participate in the in lieu parking.
And I'll call attention from Michael's benefit to the memo
Right, page three.
You found it? Okay. And thank you to those who provided that.
Yes. And I, I didn't say I thought staff in remarkably short time produced a whole lot of
Whole lot of stuff, yes.
That was very, very effective in helping make decisions. So, Ronita, why don't you, since you had a particular concept, why don't you talk about that one first?
So I, I think it's really helpful to have the examples of which properties we're talking about. I wanted to ask John, so that we have in mind, like, real numbers. When Lacy was, when Lacy was proposing the First Street project, what was their, can you remind us what their square footage and the number of parking spots they required?
I don't recall the number of parking spots, but the seventy thousand square feet was the square footage within the building. The building was a forty-five foot building, and I
And the lot area was a little over forty thousand square feet, as I recall.
That's my recollection as well. And there were three levels of parking that included the parking needed for the office use within the building, the replacement parking that was going to be relocated to the underground structure for Plaza Seven, and I believe an additional forty-one parking spaces.
What I do recall with great certainty was that what they proposed included would have fully parked the office space at the current ratio.
That's correct.
At three point three.
Can I ask, I mean, Kim has, seems to have the exact numbers.
Why don't you come up, Kim?
I think it's
Thank you. To give you, you're asking what buildings look like fifteen thousand square feet, to give you some perspective
How many spots we're really talking about? How many spots we would be talking about?
I think it's a limited number. To give an example, we own the property, the post office and the eyes optometry on, together, those are about five thousand square feet.
What's their frontage?
I'd have to look it up, but
But they wouldn't be included in this.
Are they the twenty-five foot module?
Yeah, yeah, there are several, but
Yeah, but the post office is certainly more than twenty-five.
Right, but it, it might be a double.
But that total property, the post office, is more than one property, and I think that's three, and then the eyes optometry is another. That's, total property is a little over five thousand. One seventy and one sixty State Street, the ground floor, is fifteen thousand square feet. I don't know which other properties in town hit that, but I think it's pretty limited, just to give you a sense. That's most of that block on State.
Thank you.
If that helps. Thanks.
Okay, so my, my thinking on this is that a parcel with, that's aggregating in order to build is going to have a volume of, of parking spots required that exceeds each of these A and B. They're going to be, in my mind, at more than one hundred spots. So I still thought that there was value, giving them an opportunity to help increase our funds in our parking in lieu program, because
What are you on, Ronita? A and B what?
If you look at the fourteen point seven four
In the ordinance.
One seven oh, the ordinance, where it talks about how much they'd have to satisfy
Sorry, fourteen point seven four point
Page seven.
One seven oh, page seven of the ordinance. At the very bottom, it says what they can use the parking in lieu fee to satisfy. And, you know, the only thing I don't see here is that when we were talking about this, the first fifty spots cost twenty thousand, which was the, the parking in lieu fee that was set. The next twenty-five would cost twenty-eight thousand, and anything above that would be thirty-eight thousand, so really making it
Painful.
Yes. Onerous for them to, to do more than
Fifty percent.
The initial. And the idea was that there's, there is, there's still going to be shared parking, that they don't need everyone to be parked exclusively in their building, that there will be people coming to and from their building that will be using other retail and restaurants and services in our downtown, so that there's still a benefit to allowing them access. Now, I can understand if people think this is too generous, that there's a concern that we're going to give away, and in which case I'd say, then change these percentages to fifty percent of the first fifty, and twenty-five percent of the next fifty. And then you're talking about twenty-five, if they have to build a hundred, they have to park a hundred spots, the max that they would be able to utilize is twenty-five for the first fifty, and then, what would it be, twelve for the next? In which case, you, we would, they would still be parking the vast majority. If you're, the concern is that they're not going to be like good actors, though I do, I do think what David was saying is, is true, is that builders are, have their own self-interest to make sure that there's parking for the people that they lease to.
So as it's written now, it doesn't, B and C are the same thing. I mean, you don't need B, because
The reason there was C is because the price point was supposed to be higher.
Yeah, but I mean, there is no difference here. As written, it makes no sense.
Right.
I mean, it's totally redundant. It's really A and C.
Hundred percent of the first parking space is required at the parking in lieu fee and
Right, right, okay.
Fifty percent of the next fifty parking space is required at, like, we're not going to put numbers in.
X plus Y.
Yes, right.
And then the next fifty at a different
So there's, I think there's two things conceptually, then. One is, to what size parcel should, what's the, the largest parcel that we would allow to be totally parked through a contribution to, in lieu? And then the other concept is thereafter, do you make the fees progressive?
And I think the question really is, what's the bigger goal? And I think that was very well put in the discussion point, where if the goal is to say that we don't want to encourage lots of little driveways, and it's very punitive for our very small properties to attempt to park on site because of the costs, and we do want them to develop, then the in lieu program as a concept makes perfect sense. So then Anita's point of, when do you go from being a small property where it's punitive to have you park on site, at where's the tipping point? And that was where we left the discussion. And one of the things that I was wondering about, and the reason I asked Kim, sort of an offhanded question out of the blue, was it's, to me, I think we're, fifteen thousand is a, an area, and if it was, if had a fifty foot frontage and went on forever, it still would be incredibly difficult to park. And that's because, as I think Bill pointed out, or one of the earlier memos, there is a geometry to parking, that there's the space, there's the backup space, there's the aisle, and if the parking area is not in that geometry, you either have wasted space, or you can't park at all. And so I'm wondering, and I'm throwing this out for concept, whether there should be two factors for it, that it should not only be an area which is a threshold, but also a frontage maximum. Because if you had a hundred foot frontage and it was shallow, you might be able to do something. I don't know. That was what was going through my mind on this. But I think you've put it down very carefully. There are two pieces, and we started to get distracted by the costing of it, but in fact, we still need to get back to what's the threshold and why is fifteen thousand? And that's where I got to the frontage piece, because one of the discussion points talked about the, if you assume it's fifteen thousand and they're average a hundred foot deep, then you have a hundred and fifty foot width. Well, that's fine, but what if the parcel doesn't fit in that mold? Then does that mean that it needs to have a different evaluating point?
And here's a really stupid question, but what if somebody were able to aggregate, and I'll, I'll just use First Street as an example, what if, in order to be able to use What if, in order to be able to use all of parking and loo fee, you had those eight parcels, but that total frontage was so large that it would put you over, or the square footage put you over? Would you then have an unintended consequence here where someone would be incentivized to divide that up and develop it in two pieces, or even three pieces, in order to be able to do it all through a parking and loo? And I mean, I'm just thinking for, you know, whack, what kind of wacko things can happen? And that occurred to me as one of the wacko things that could happen, as an unintended consequence.
I mean, that's, I think, that's why I wanted to bring the broader concept to, if we know what the goal is, and the goal is to help our smaller properties who are compromised both in frontage for ability to get on a street and for the ability to do the geometry of cars turning, that's different than saying, if I have a 15,000 square foot property, I should be able to park all on the lot. I mean, that, that's the principle that we were going for, I think. Alex, what do you think?
I just wanted to go back to understanding something that Ronit said. You're saying that if, if you feel like this is too generous, then change the percentages? But in order-
And tie it to cost.
In order for this to work, doesn't the first here have to be 100%? Or can you, I guess because you're, you're part of the parking plaza, then you're automatically gonna have some space? Like, can, can this be, can it be less than 100%?
I don't think any of these people are considered in the, you're talking about the original parking district? So, none of these people, if they were-
This says, properties located-
Not in the original parking district.
Not, not in the original plazas, located in the original parking district.
Here's the best example I can give. When you go to Citarella or to Farmica, for example, those places had to park in their building, right? But I don't park in their building. I park elsewhere, and I think a lot of other people do. So, they would be able to have contrib, they didn't, there's parking that is excess of what's being used because those places attract people who are using shared parking areas. And so, they could have contributed to our fund to build our shared parking spaces and not have this area that people aren't clear is dedicated parking for their spaces.
And I don't think people even know that's their parking.
Well, the offices, it's, it's a multi, it's a multi-use building.
I mean, for the restaurant.
There's no doubt they would have parked all for their offices. They couldn't have, they couldn't have signed leases with tenants. They couldn't guarantee that they could, their employees and-
Right, for, for regular, whether that be employees or whoever. But I mean, people who are just frequenting the restaurant, they don't even know there's a garage.
Right, and it's not where they go to park.
No, no. But I, I don't know if that matters to what we're trying to, yeah, exactly.
So, what I hear you saying, Ronit, is if that building is of a certain size, if the function would not require the use of all of the spaces that they would have to, if they only provided spaces for the stuff where they definitely knew they were gonna wanna use the spaces, like the leasing tenants and not the restaurant. I guess my question is, if you were a restaurant and you had no parking, would you be able to lease the restaurant space? Would a restaurant come in if they had no parking? And what could you say to them, well, there's street parking. Oh, well, there's a plaza, oh, but you're really not supposed to park there.
You wouldn't have no parking, they'd still be required to park, but they would be contributing, they would making a contribution to the city. And the city would have to over, I mean, we'd have to create more parking, right? The city would have to, so, for example, instead of parking spots in the back, Citarella could have maybe paid for 15 spots, and that would have given funds for the city to maybe do one of their restripings.
But they wouldn't have provided the spaces. The spaces were gonna be used on the existing city parking, people were gonna use the exhaust.
Right, no, you're right.
But, as you point out, at that time of night, that's not the high usage.
Right.
But getting back to the 15,000 square foot, which we really need to come up with some magic number, what if it was 10,000?
So, I thought that it was geometry, that kind of-
Well, that was one, that made the assumption that you had 100-foot wide property.
Right.
What if you don't?
Well, in these examples, I mean, should we drill down deeper to see what, because this is what we're talking about, right? These are the parcels we're talking about.
And, and I'll point out that with, I think with the exception of 170 State Street, well, Wells Fargo and State Street. Comerica is which-
On San Antonio.
Okay, so forget-
It's somewhere behind La Salto's Grill, right?
Right, but for the Wells Fargo and State Street properties, those are technically in the area of the original parking district. The rest of these are outside. Is that right?
The First Street properties?
Draggers, I mean, it's already there.
No, no, the question is, where are they?
No, they're not in the original.
The, the way that, the way the ordinance is drafted is that it says, "Properties other than the plazas that are located within the original parking district have unrestricted use." So, the question is, the ones that are in the original parking district have unrestricted use. A couple of these are technically not a part of the original parking district, because they didn't pay into it, but they're within the geographic boundary of the original parking district. So, what's their status with respect to the way the ordinance is drafted? And that applies to, I believe, Wells Fargo and 170 State. And I don't know that it applies to any of the others. It certainly doesn't apply to Draggers and First Street, because those are outside. Comerica's outside, and Walgreens is outside.
So, oh, boy, do I see, I feel like, okay. David, are you the one who would be best able to serve this? No, you have to come up and talk in the microphone, so people at home can hear you. We get a little outside input here.
I think, I think one thing that you're overlooking is that any property, any property owners outside of the OPD, the original parking district, can elect to join the expanded parking district. There is, we spent pages about the expanded parking district.
But there's nothing that's defined in here as an expanded parking district. That's the concern.
You're talking about the way the ordinance was written.
Ordinance is drafted, yeah, that's why I'm raising the question, is how it's drafted.
That needs to be correct. I mean, that, that was the mechanism, is that they, whether it's the Mason Building that never decided to join, or whether it's-
170 State.
170 State Street, they, we have a, we felt we set up a pretty good mechanism for that to occur, but I don't think, I think you're correct. It's not in the ordinance the way it's drafted.
Okay, wait, and, thank you, David. And Kim, do you have an additional piece of information?
Yeah, one, one thing to add to this is that it's intended that this in lieu, especially with respect to people who are not in the district joining it, is discretionary. So, you don't need to, I believe, anticipate everything that somebody might do. If somebody comes in with a property where it's inappropriate, maybe it's, you know, 15,000 square feet, but it doesn't work, the city has discretion in terms of how that works, in terms of somebody joining the district. It says may join, and other cities that we examine give discretion to the city to decide when to allow somebody to use in lieu.
Again, I think that's in your report, is recommended, as recommendation, but it's not in the ordinance as drafted.
Okay.
And actually-
There's a little, I, as a lawyer, looked at it in terms, it says may rather than shall, and so that's how I interpret it, but it might be good to make that more explicit, so people understand, oh, boy, you know, Draggers can do whatever they want. It's discretionary to the city whether or not a property can take advantage of the in lieu.
Okay, so, thank you, Kim. This gets to a point that Ronit often brings up, which is, if we wanna make it sure and clear and transparent for applicants, then if we leave, if we say you may join the district on the understanding that the city may tell you you can't, I think we have created something that we're really not wanting to do. So, although we don't want to go down a list of 15 different conditions and give it in the draft ordinance of each one that you can or can't do it, I think we have to be really clear, again, about what the goal is. And then, it will be easy for someone to parse out of the ordinance what they can do and what they can't do.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Ask anybody.
It just seems to me, out of 15,000 square feet, I can't imagine a situation where a parcel that big, you wouldn't be able to-
Park.
Park.
Well, it seemed-
Like irrespective of how, you know, how much frontage you have, like, that's big enough where I just can't imagine that. I mean, even 10,000 probably, so, I'm not sure that's, I hear you, I'm just, I don't know if it's a real concern, given what we're talking about.
That's a point. Mike, you haven't said anything about this.
Yeah.
That's okay.
I, I agree with Alex's point. I think that was a good point, yeah. I mean, otherwise, how are we gonna anticipate, you know, every triangulation, you know, right?
Well, if we didn't have a town that was built on a triangle grid-
Yes, that would be a lot easier.
I would worry about this less, but we have some pretty odd parcels in town because we aren't on a rectangular grid.
That is true, but-
Is the concern, if, if the concern is that we're giving away the, we're giving, we're risking giving away the, too much?
I don't, I think the concern, concern may be that we wanna get everybody with sufficient parking. I think that's the first goal. And then you get to the point of, we have always said you have to park everything on your own property. And then we had all these exceptions, because we had properties that couldn't be parked. And so now we're dealing with that piece of it. But we're saying, up to a certain point, we still want you to provide all the parking. At least, that's what I'm thinking. Now, what you're saying is, maybe even at a large scale, you don't have to provide all the parking. Instead, we'll take some money and apply that towards a parking structure at some point.
Put it where we, where people are really actually sharing parking.
And that's, that's an apple or an orange. I don't think they're mutually exclusive per se, but I think that's two different points. Mike?
Well, when I look at this list of seven properties, I think they're pretty major properties, and I think the rest of the core is very small. So, parking and loo fee makes sense to me.
Okay. For big properties at this, these are the properties that have been identified as 15,000.
So, these properties, right, and, and the rest of them, you know, when you own some post office and you wanna make it two stories, then you're gonna pay a parking and loo fee.
Okay.
So, do I understand, Michael, what you're saying is that excluding these properties that are larger than 15,000, if you're within the original parking district, you have, as a principle, an absolute right to do all your parking through parking and loo?
Absolutely.
Then, when you talk about the parcels that are not a part of the original parking district, but are still geographically within it.
I don't know what you mean by that.
We, that's, that covers items numbers three and four here. So, it's Wells Fargo and-
And 170 State. Four and five.
For example, and then, I don't know how big the Masonic parcel is. I don't know if it's 15, either, I don't think it's 15,000, that's my recognition. So, so irrespective of the size, but we've got three large parcels-
Right.
That are not part of the original parking district, but are within the geographic boundary of the original parking district. How do we account for those cases? And then, separate from that, we talk about what we do outside the original parking district.
But item three and four are-
No, she means four and five.
I mean, four and five, sorry.
So, items four and five are beyond the 15,000 square feet, right?
But within the original parking district, they have unlimited use, because do we really wanna par, do we-
But they're not a part of the original parking district, so they don't have, they don't have unlimited.
Is that just simply the correction to include their ability to buy in, and then we're done with this?
That's why I need to say that.
Well, that's the question.
They're beyond 15,000 square feet, and therefore, when somebody's, State Street has to park.
No, but that, I think that's the question, is which category are they gonna fall into? Are they gonna fall into the category that they're out, quote, outside the original parking district, and therefore, they, if they're more than 15,000, they get covered by the 15,000 rule? Or are they part of the, quote, original parking district, they can-
Opt in.
Opt in, and then take advantage of 100, of whatever the, the 100% the-
So, my thought was, when I was asking the question to John, was what's 100, what's 15,000 square feet, right? And he, and everybody said, well, these seven parcels are beyond 15,000, 15,000 square feet. So, those are going to have to park themselves.
I have a question. Ron Packard's building-
Right.
Is in the original parking district?
Right.
Uses the parking lots behind it, in that plaza, that's theirs. But 40 Main is not in the original parking district?
It is.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Ron Packard's building has a basement. The two stories above it, right?
But there's no parking garage.
No, because they're parked, they're in the, they're in the original.
I still, even if someone aggregated a bunch on Main Street, I don't think we'd want a big parking garage at all between Second and Third Street on Main Street. That's not desirable. That would kinda kill that stretch, if you're trying to create this pedestrian experience.
So, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what your point is.
What parking garage?
I, I think it's, if I might share-
Please, jump right in.
It, it sounds like, it's, it's a question of what do you want your downtown to look like? Do you want the, do you want your Main Street and your State Street to have a lot of driveway cuts and interrupt the rhythm of the building?
And we've already said, no, we don't.
Yeah, that's, that's, so if that's the goal, then I think you look to those types of properties for, for the, the types that can be providing their parking through in lieu payments.
Right.
Okay, that, I think we have no problem with that.
Yeah, right. Right, I have no problem with that. My question is, what do we do with these outside cases? If we're going to be equitable and think this through, then what do we do with these outside cases?
What are the outside cases?
Wells Fargo and 170 State.
Wells Fargo and 170 State Street are not-
And Masonic, which you said is-
And Masonic are-
But they are beyond 150, 150, or 15,000 square feet.
Two of the three of them are, but not the third one. The Masonic is not.
So, what it's not-
And neither does Costume Bank, come to think of it. It's not part of the, I mean, we haven't, we have several parcels that are within the geometry of the, the parking district, the original parking district, but aren't a part of. They didn't buy in, and I think we need to address those cases. Now, whether we also say that if they're this large, then they fit, then we're gonna judge them according to the big size rules, that's a separate question, but how do we address?
Well, but, but that's the point, is I think what you've put your finger on are the exceptions to the general rule. And I think we're okay with general rule, as I'm looking across the bank here, that 15,000 is a threshold that we can live with.
Right.
As, if you're 15,000 square feet, you need to park yourself, okay? Now, let's look at the exceptions where the ordinance can have a line, since we know what the exception would be, to say that if you're-
I'm sorry, you said more than, less than 15,000, they have to park themselves? You meant more, more.
So, if the Costume Bank wants to build two stories-
Or if someone buys the Costume Bank from the county and says, here's a property I really like, I would like to develop this fully, what would they, what position would they be in?
But if they weren't going to build more than 100, or 15,000 square feet?
Well, that's, that's my point. I mean, they could. That's a big chunk of land there.
So, can we fix this? Typo has been bothering me for 20 minutes. And it's a major, it's a major typo. Well, there's many typos, but this is, is, I think, big, and I saw Alex looking at it, so that's why. I just have to say it now. In D, which is right in front of one-
Identify, identify the section.
D, page seven, section 14.74.17. This is what we're talking about, right? And so, it's going on about the, the properties not located within the OPD. So, the very last sentence, "For properties not part of the original parking district, which opt to join the parking districts that are greater than 15,000 square feet, they're subject to the following restrictions." Because the previous part was about the less than. And so, I just, you know, and-
That's, that's an, it's not a typo, that's a conceptual typo.
That's a conceptual thing that was, you know.
There is not one grammatically correct sentence in this entire clause. It's just making me crazy.
Hold on, Sally.
Isn't that what you were looking at, or were you?
Hold on, if you change it to that are greater than 15,000 square feet, then you're, then you're allowing them to use in lieu, which I don't think is what you're, what you're thinking. So, I think, I, I think-
No, they're subject, they're subject to the following, so the first one, let's take it in order then, D in order. The first thing says that properties not, not including the plazas, located within the OPD have- the plazas, located within the OPD, have unrestricted use of the in lieu fee.
Right.
Okay, so that's one. Next is for properties not part of the OPD, which opt to join the parking district that are.
And are.
And are, less than fifteen thousand square feet, will have unrestricted use of the in lieu fee. Then the third one is for properties not part of the OPD.
Wait, wait, slow down.
Wait, the second one should be that are greater than fifteen thousand square feet.
No.
No, when.
Oh, sorry, that are less.
The less than.
Yeah.
Less than have unrestricted use. This assumes that they have bought in. So this is gonna be the case of the Masonic property, for example.
That's right.
If they, if they elected to buy in.
Right. And then the third one is for properties not part of the OPD, which opt to join the parking district, which are greater than fifteen thousand square feet, they are subject to the following parking restriction.
Right, but the question is, where's the other case?
Well, then there's more cases to come, too.
Well, because this is the one, what you're saying is I don't want driveways. I want them out, I want them not to have a driveway in this attractive part of the center of town. That's what this is saying.
Well, that's the less than fifteen thousand.
But if you change it to greater than fifteen thousand, right, then you're saying you can be greater than fifteen thousand and use a hundred percent of.
The first fifty.
Of the first fifty for in lieu, which I thought we were saying, you're greater than fifteen, fifteen thousand, you gotta park yourself.
Right.
Right.
Right. I was advocating for allowing some.
Right.
Use of the in lieu.
But that's not what.
And I'm in the minority.
Right. I think you're in the minority. And in fact, I think this ordinance might in the next draft.
Uh huh.
Be bullet pointed, so that we could.
Or sub A's, B's, and C's, or something.
Well, so we know that it's D, D one, D two, D three, and so someone looking at it could figure which category they're in or want to be in based on what the requirements are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think you're missing, basically, I think you're missing a sentence.
Another one.
Another one.
And what's.
Or another case, maybe.
Which is.
Which is.
Um, for properties, it should just be a qualifier that says, if you are a, whether your property, if you're a property less than fifteen thousand square feet, you have to opt into the original parking district or pay that fee in order to take advantage of the in lieu, right? Is that what we're saying?
No, I think it's greater than.
That's another thing, we could say that.
Oh, I thought.
Doesn't it say that?
It's, I think that's what it, it's, it's not.
That's what the first part says.
As clear as it could be, but that's what it means.
That's the first part. The second part is, is, it needs to say greater than fifteen thousand square feet or subject to the following restriction.
It's differentiating, it's making, it's saying you're either in the OPD or you're out. If you're in, unlimited use. If you're out, there's this threshold of fifteen thousand.
Yes.
And if you're under, you're in. And if you're over, you can't get in.
You have to, you have to park. You have to park yourself. And I think that would be very clear.
So but then.
But the case that's not here then is if you're.
In the OPD, which they pay.
If you're not in and you opt to join and you're greater, and you're.
Less than.
Less than fifteen, oh, wait a sec.
Greater than.
I, I think it's missing greater than.
Opt to join the parking.
What if we said, what if we said in the first sentence, properties not including the plazas located within the original parking district boundary, have unrestricted use of the in lieu fee to satisfy their parking requirements, as long as they've.
As long as they're less than fifteen thousand square feet?
No, isn't it as long as they've joined?
No, because they have joined. They have joined. They're in. It says located.
As long as they're less.
Located within.
And what you mean is.
Are we talking about?
Who are, who are part of, members of. So it's not, it's not really location.
Not really a member of, because it's, you're, you're in part of the original, but there's no longer a parking district. It's the boundary.
That's what the problem is.
Of.
You're saying that there's a couple.
This is why the attorney needs to read this thing.
You know what? I, I think we've, we've exhausted this one. Let me say this. Fifteen thousand appears to be a threshold we can live with.
Right.
I believe for the purposes of the next draft, it might be very useful to have a table.
Yes.
Where there are columns, just as Renee was saying, you say, are you in the original parking district, yes or no? If the answer is yes, look here. If you're not here, do you wanna be in it?
If you do, then these are the rules. If you don't, then these are the rules.
But were you trying to avoid a windfall for the handful of parcels that are in the original parking district?
I'm not motivated by, I'm not motivated by any of that. I'm just trying to be clear as to what the rules are gonna be. I, I don't, I haven't even got to whether there's a windfall or not.
Well, what is, what, what is your, what's your take on that?
Cause they are a case that's not described.
All right, wait a minute, wait a minute.
There are, I don't know their size, but they're, I think they're actually quite small. There are a couple parcels that didn't.
That chose not to join.
That chose not to join. We didn't use them to calculate the original square footage and the formula. So those parcels should have, they, they weren't, maybe they should have to.
They have to do something.
Yeah, they should do.
They have to do something.
I think conceptually, if they're under.
There might be small parcels, which is, the whole thing is moot.
If you're under fifteen thousand and you're in the physical boundary of the original parking district, you are compelled to join before you can have access to the parking in lieu. Is that conceptually what we're saying?
Right.
I think you are already in.
I would like to hear what Mr. Rock has to say.
Yes, I think I'd like to hear Mr. Rock, because they spent weeks doing this. They just spent tonight doing this. And then I think we should move off this issue, guys, because I think David will fill in the last pieces, but then John will be able to come back with a grid setup that will help.
So you hit, part of the reason it took so long to do this is the issue about member, it isn't, at the time the original parking district was formed, the people who opted in actually donated their land, and in that sense, they paid in. So it wasn't, there's, there was nothing, they're not members in this, I, I'm sure, and then what happened was the city took over the management and administration of the parking plaza, but we felt it was extremely unfair to the, to the property owners of the original property district to let people opt in without them having to pay to join. And I, I agree with Anita that I'm not sure that the ordinance, as it's drafted, makes that clear at all. It, it needs to deal, that's a complex issue that it needs to deal with. There has to be a mechanism to bring them to parity in terms of the equality of them being able to use the, the parking in lieu, the.
Can I ask a quick question? Is that the two eighty-six that was calculated? Is that the?
That's our next item for discussion.
But is that how you get parity, by your buying in at two eighty-six?
Yes, exactly right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's how you get parity? And that's, okay.
So I saw.
So in fact, the piece that John, we're talking about that's missing, is that those oddball properties that David is talking about, they're the ones who, if they are going to want to participate in the in lieu program, they still have to pay their share that they opted out of in the original.
Start.
They have to opt in before they can take advantage of the parking in lieu. Do we have consensus here that that, everybody agrees to that?
Yes.
So I wanna confirm one thing as well. It sounds like you would like to include in the ordinance then the process for becoming, paying for inclusion in the OPD, the original.
And I, and I think it has to be separate depending on whether you're joining the OPD from within the geographic boundary of the original OPD, or whether you're talking about the rest of the triangle. And the, and we'll get to that reason in a minute.
Well, and so that we get to.
What it takes to buy in.
It took a long time, but I think that John has good input for the next step. But the next question that came up was, was then exactly what Alec just asked, which is, what does it cost you to opt in so that you're at parity before you get to take advantage of the in lieu program? And that is the ratio of two point eight six per thousand square feet, and that was geographic land square feet, I think we determined at the last meeting. It is not building, it is the, the acreage.
Lot.
It's what you own.
It's the lot square footage.
The actual earth.
Okay.
And one maybe minor point, but I think should help the clarity also, is to be sure that we're actually talking about two buckets. One that is, one that lots are less than fifteen thousand square feet, and the other, they are fifteen thousand square feet are greater. Right now, it's all less than or greater than.
So what if you're right at fifteen?
I thought I was going crazy, because I, I was like, I thought this was in here. But if you look at page eight.
All right. And the section of the ordinance we're talking about is.
Which section, Alex?
So it is section fourteen seventy-four, one seventy E.
One seventy E.
Joining the parking district.
Huh?
Joining the parking district.
Oh, right.
Sorry, F.
F, oh, F, okay.
Right? Those properties located in the triangle that are not already members of the original parking district may join the original parking district by.
But it's a may. We're back to its may, as opposed to it being a condition of being able to use the.
That's the difference of what we were talking about. Right, Kim was giving his information.
But I think, hold on, let's see.
But this is not restricted by size. This is.
And it needs to cover both cases. If they just wanna join, which is what, I don't know why they would do that, but if they just wanna join, is different from wanting to join and participate in the parking in lieu.
Okay, well, there's some tweaking, I guess that needs to happen, but it's.
Would it be beneficial then to actually pull that out as a different subsection, the joining the parking district?
I would.
Probably, yes.
Yep.
It's an excellent idea.
Because I think there needs to be a joining the parking district in, in its elsewhere, or maybe it's not here at all. And that is if you're outside the original parking district and you're going to join. And I don't remember where that, if that's in here or not.
But as we're looking.
Within a triangle.
But as we're looking at F, when it says, um, members that are not already members of the OPD, instead of may join, I think it has to say shall join in order to use the in lieu program in the following way.
Right. Yeah, maybe you start. The ones that aren't participants, who wish to use PLP, P I L P, must first.
Join.
Join. And you do that in the following way.
In the following manner. Because that's what we're trying to do, is preventing the windfall.
Yes, exactly.
And clear, if someone looked at it from the outside, had not been part of this, they would know what they could do.
I agree.
John, you good?
Yeah, I think that I, I just wanna confirm that that's what you would like to have in the ordinance.
Well, I can look down here, and the entire day was nodding as you were reading the piece of paper. And the entire audience was nodding at the same time. I think we have a solid consensus here.
Okay.
People have spoken.
Well, at least all eleven of us. So here's the question. How comfortable are we with the two point eight six ratio? Because I'm not sure that was the question. I think the question was what we just dealt with, which is, no one should get a free ride.
Right.
So I think the, the better question asked is, are you comfortable with the formula that two point eight six resulted from?
Was developed, yes.
If you are, then you need to verify the numbers, right? And the, and the formula was simple. It was calculate the contribution that the people, that the original contributors made, and the, and you can only, the contribution is the number of spots in the parking plazas. And that is a verifiable number. What is the number?
And the other number was what?
And the other number was the parcel square footage. So each of the, in the original.
Your lot size.
Right. And you, and you do that math. So we did a count, but the city should verify. They should have their number. And the city has the best access to the public records that will identify the number.
I think John's been losing more hair trying to get the lot square footage verified.
Well, but this is, it's county records. I mean, the only thing you can base it on is county records.
The tax records.
Because even, even though the tax records may not be accurate, they are, whenever there's a real estate deal, they say, this is based on county records.
Right.
Don't, don't be on us. But you were about to say something, Mike, I thought.
No, I just was gonna say, I think that the numbers are the numbers.
Yeah, I think that's.
In that case, yeah, I agree. In that case, the numbers are numbers. It's this many spaces and it's this much square feet, and you divide them, and that's what you get.
And, and are we comfortable with that formula?
Yes.
Can I just ask a quick question, Renee, please?
Even slow questions.
And there's a disparity, I guess there's, you get a.
Where are you?
Um, well, I'm just, it's an overall concept, but I'm particularly looking at page four.
Which document?
Fourteen seventy-four, zero eighty.
Draft, okay.
Right, because you're getting a credit for three and a half stalls.
That's because you get extra, I'm sorry.
And so I think that's because of the on-street.
Right.
Parking. So there's just, I mean, I just wanna explain for, make sure we're on the same, on the same page here, that you can buy in for two point eight six, or whatever it is, or whatever, it's a thing, but you're getting a, if you were in, you're getting a credit for three and a half.
Right. And the, and the way that that was done was we looked, we counted again the number of on-street parking, and we said, they should share equally. Everyone should share equally in that additional parking. It should be counted. If you didn't count it, then we would, it would be like.
Be way crazier.
Trying to figure out what, you know, your value is, and not considering fifteen percent of your assets.
Right.
So that's how we came up with that.
And that's clear? I think we can move on from here.
Well, I have a challenge with that, which is, on-street parking is public parking, and the city has its whims of how it wants to park those spaces.
Or take them away for other purposes.
Right, exactly. So we should use square footage for the parking str- for the public parking, not for what's on-street.
So what you're saying is, you don't agree with that formula if it includes the on-street parking?
The three.
Point five.
Right, because the city has the right to mix it up.
Remove parking spaces.
Remove parking spaces.
That on-street.
Well, wait a minute, wait, I wanna hear Sally. You haven't commented on this. I hate to be like a teacher, but I wanna make sure with, that it's a minority position.
Well, I actually didn't have an issue with that.
Okay.
Um, I had other things, but it didn't seem the right time to, to bring them up.
Okay.
But isn't it because they gave up land, and that land became the on-street parking?
Yeah, so I mean, I actually think that.
They should get credit for it.
That wasn't, that, I don't know that that was the, the thinking behind it. But I think the solution, then, rather than just not including the obvious.
The fifteen percent of your assets.
That we have, I think a better solution is if in this circumstance that the city somehow gets rid of ten percent of on-street parking, which maybe they'll do.
Well, if they, if they close, if they close one of the streets.
We're talking about bike park corrals, right?
So if that happens, this is not a set and forget number. That means that if something like that happens, then that same year, if we notice that, because I think what we're really talking about is like, one spot's gonna get lost because of a bike, and another spot might be.
No, I'm thinking about if the downtown vision is shutting one of the streets and making.
Then this number will change. Then that number should change. But.
But, and that's not really in the residential, because this is really referring to the And that's not really in the residential, because this is really referring to the residential. I guess it could refer to First Street, maybe, but...
Well, I'm thinking of St. Maine, that's where I'm focused.
The visioning process has, what has the street closing.
There's no residential there. The section is residential uses in, that's why...
Okay, you're right.
The same credit applies elsewhere.
It's in the next one, it's in commercial and office uses.
Right, it's in seventeen, fourteen seventy-four one hundred.
I really like when we refer to the areas.
It's B on page five.
Page five, the top, it's the second item. It says may apply a credit of 3.5 stalls for every thousand square feet.
Right.
Okay, so I'm looking at the downtown visioning, which is closing an entire street. So it's not one space for a parking, for a bike corral. It's losing 30 spaces, or 40 spaces, or more. So the question is, how do we... Is this a problem? That's question one. And if it is, how can we... This is going to be codified in an ordinance. So we have to, if we're concerned at the worst-case scenario, how can we allow credit for the way things are now and then have something where we could have... This number is examined by the Permanent Parking Commission that we're going to recommend based on the fluctuation in the survey of spaces that the city is providing. Because that's one of the things that we made in our resolution, that staff would do a nose count. And so if the nose count changes, actually the bumper count changes. Who didn't turn off his phone?
No, I did not, sorry.
Who always reminds everyone else.
I know.
I did, I did. So that's a question.
I guess maybe the question is, if the city elects to remove parking, should the landowner get penalized for that?
No.
Right, I don't, like, I think, I think it could be a static number because it should be what they donated, what, what they ended up giving up, right? To create parking. And so if the city elects to do something different, I don't know that this necessarily needs to be a...
But my point is, I don't think the public parking should be considered towards the private parking area.
Well, I understand that, but that's, that is one point.
Right.
I'm gonna ask David to come up and, and share his point. And then we'll see if, as we were saying in other pieces of discussion, you, that may be a minority position, in which case we will continue with the next part of the discussion. But David, did you have something to clarify this, hope?
Just that, Mike, you used the right words. He had the minority position at the time on the Citywide Parking Committee.
No, I've, I've had this...
He's had that position all along, and the, the eight other people who outvoted him each time all said the same thing, that public parking is public parking. The public parking in the, on the street is no less holy than the public parking behind, in the plaza. It's a public parking space. And this was all done in the interest of parity and equality and fairness to, we spent months on it to try to work it out, and it, those are public parking spaces. And so it's a formula. Whether they happen to be taken away and used or not used or used for a pedestrian walkway is immaterial. It's just, it's just, it's a construct, it's a philosophical construct to arrive at parity.
Okay.
And that's where we're coming from.
Good, thank you, so...
My concern, because I partly agree with Mike, is the document I passed out two weeks ago, or whenever it was, that because I think we have actual development that is greater than the total lot square footage, that if we then give credit at this rate, we're actually giving away more spaces than we have.
This is only saying of the land area, not of the development.
Right, but you're, but if you, if you assume that, if you've done your calculation based on, this is the how many square feet of land we have, and this is how many parking spaces we have, okay? So that's how we got our ratio, and then we included the street parking, and that's, so it's just based on that. If we then say, okay, mister, whoever you are, but right now, the actuality is they're only using half of their lot. So when they're gonna develop, we're gonna give them credit for all of their lot, 100% of their, of their, of their lot space. They've only been using maybe half the spaces that they're now gonna use. Now we're giving them credit for all of it. They're gonna be using more spaces than they used to use, but we haven't taken it away from anyone. Because it's, it's a practicality issue that then if you have another property, and we have 25% of our properties in the original parking district, based on my walking up and down the streets and counting them, that are two-story buildings. And so what you have right now is you have some buildings that are quote "fully parked" by virtue of the fact that they're taking parking that would otherwise be used by a lot that's not currently fully occupied. And if we do it based on this formula without realizing the actual differential of how much square footage we have operating, operating in town, versus what kind of formula we're, if we do it this way, we're gonna be giving away more parking than we actually have.
But you're...
That's why I passed, that's why I passed out the example, so you guys would have time to look at it.
I don't get it, because it's all, it was based on the amount of land that you gave up, and so if you decided to...
And whether you use it or not.
Whether you use it or not, should I not...
I'm talking about the practicality. I'm talking about the real world.
But if you, you then, what, if you didn't do it this way, then the person who didn't develop, basically has been, like, struggling, will be penalized compared to the person who's already, like, the hotel is already filled out.
And I'm not suggesting we should do that. I'm just saying we have to be aware that if we apply this across the board, given what we currently have in the way of developed space, some lots which have only partially covered, and some lots which have fully covered and with two stories, we are potentially giving away 20% of parking that doesn't exist.
I'm not sure that giving away is the right word.
We're giving credit for. We're giving credit for park, for 20% of spaces that don't exist. And it means that over time, what we're doing is we're, we're driving ourselves into a hole. And I just want us to realize that that's what we're doing before we agree to this formula.
Right, because what I was gonna say is, if you have a single-story property and you double that, you don't double the on-street parking.
True.
Right? You need to increase the parking by some ratio. But the fact that we credit the fact that they have on-street parking adds...
But again, I hear what you're saying, and I see where the two of you are, finally, I see where it's coming from. But I think we have to look back at what is the goal? What's the goal we're trying to achieve? And if we're trying to achieve is to make it easier for our underdeveloped, smaller properties in the core of our town to develop, then I think this formula does that. And in my opinion, and it's maybe a minority opinion, I see what you're saying in terms of you are giving credit where maybe you shouldn't, but I don't see as big a downside for that as I do for keeping the properties that want to develop and can't park at all because they can't do it on their lot.
I just want us to recognize that if we follow this formula, every time we approve a project, we are potentially underparking by as much as 20, potentially underparking by as much as 20%. And we should realize that, and we should, and we can say that's okay. I just don't want us to re, have a bunch of stuff redone, and then we wake up, you know, 10 years from now, we go, why are we so friggin' underparked? We're underparked and, you know, by now by, we've, we've redeveloped half of our town and we're underparked by 10%. What happened? Now, a lot of other things will happen in the meantime, and blah blah.
This is one piece in an overall plan that we're looking at, so that if this piece is under, we've got, we are hopefully collecting these in lieu parking fees so that we can actually have a structure that will take a big, I see this as...
But the city has to put, put, have some way of accommodating the fact that it is deliberately crediting spaces and creating a deficit. And decide how we're gonna handle that.
So, wait, let me, so your analysis said 15% deficit rather than 20 when I looked at the paper.
Yeah, 15%.
So 15%.
Yeah.
So anyway, just, because I just, so I did look at it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, you're welcome. And, but you're making the assumption in that, that nothing that is already two or three, if you, you know, inside the Mansard Roof, that, or two or even three in the downtown triangle, the, the old, what's the Harmon Building, that none of those are gonna develop, and...
Just that the probability is that what's going to get redeveloped, if we do this, are the one stories. It's not that there won't be, but the prob, high probability is, that it'll be the one stories.
So I think it all, it kinda comes out in the wash, because there's plenty of really old, there's some really old two stories or three, in the case of that Harmon Building, that, you know, can develop, and there, so it's not all gonna be the one stories.
But it's a very small case.
But my point is that the, we shouldn't count on-street parking towards a structures parking requirement.
All right, I hear, so we are now saying the same things over and over and over again.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. David, I'm gonna pass on this one, because you know what? I see that there's this piece here. What I think I heard when I made notes is I believe that there is not a full consensus, but there is a majority who will support this formula.
Yeah.
We can then discuss that again, or in fact, one nice thing about having a city council member here is when it comes to council, she can say, these were unanimous when they presented the resolution to us. This one was contentious, and here is the piece. And then above our pay grade, those people can decide if that's a position that council is willing to take. And Anita, you are perfectly welcome to take that document, which was incredibly well-crafted, and bring that along and say, here, just in case you didn't get this guy, read the memo, as they say. Because the third item that we can look at is...
Do you want to get a straw poll on those two?
So are we gonna make a motion for the...
No, we're giving input, we're giving input for the next draft to come back for the public hearing.
Right.
Right? Yes.
John's gonna be studying the tapes, boy, is he ever. The third item is the in lieu fee, and I was interested particularly in this item when Renee pointed out that the concept here was that it would be graduated, so that you would encourage some parking on your site, pretty much no matter what you were doing.
Yeah, a progressive.
A progressive fee. And so I believe that we had a resolution at an earlier point that said, city council's gonna set the fee.
Right.
And I'm wondering if our input to city council should be, that it should be progressive fee, and that they can set what that is based on whatever metric they choose to draw it from in terms of what other people are, what other cities are doing, what the economist says, whatever. Or John, are you looking for us to give them suggested numbers?
I think we ought to give them a model to shoot at.
Can I ask a question again?
Always.
The...
I think we should hear from John.
Well, the, the whole point of this is that we're saying we don't want cut-up parcels, right? And we're considering under 15,000 to be cut up, so...
This is the driveways you're referring to?
Right.
Right.
And so, to me, it's like, it's kind of binary. Like, if you're over 15,000, you're parking. If you're under 15,000, we want to encourage you to redevelop. And so why penalize? Why do we need to make it graduated if we're trying, if we're saying that under 15,000, we feel like you should be able to take advantage of the in lieu fee?
So can I ask a question? What does John think?
John, you were about to say something, and then we...
Respond to your question, if the council wants you to come up with a number. I'm not necessarily certain that the council wants you to come up with a number, but you've got a number of recommendations that have been provided to you. Do any of those look like they would be appropriate for you to move forward onto the city council as a starting point? And then what would the basis for that be?
We have to have basis, otherwise it's not gonna be legal.
So, can I make a...
But before we move on to that, so Alex's question, let me start as an aside, because you don't have to cover every square foot of your lot. You could have some onsite parking. You could at the very least have your disabled parking right next to the building on your property, where you have to anyway. So in lieu, remember, cannot cover your handicap parking. So we are gonna encourage them to park some, and that's the reason for the progressive. And I don't think we want ideally, maybe I should speak for myself. I would not like to see every parcel in town developed with a 200 complete percent FAR, covering it from end to end to end with no parking, and in lieu be covering the spaces. I think I want to have some non-developed space, from my point of view. Whether that's a general opinion, I'm just stating my point of view, now.
I think that has, almost has to be done through the general plan or the, elsewhere in the zoning code as terms of, of either FAR or a lot coverage restriction.
Well, but also, we have always said that because it's form-based zoning, we have another layer of review that we can say, this is massive, this is bulky, this is inappropriate, yada yada. So there is still some discretion there.
Which we're not very good at.
But...
So my perspective is, what I read from John about in lieu fees, it's all over the board.
Yeah.
You know, throw a dart, that's the number. And I think city councils should decide what the number is.
Well, I believe that a lot of time was spent at the parking committee figuring out an appropriate amount.
So I would, I would advise that the, that the lawyer really weigh in heavily on this.
The city attorney.
The city attorney weigh in heavily on this topic. Because, while I thought it was interesting what other towns are doing, it is really irrelevant to what it's gonna cost us in Los Altos to replace parking. And that is the criteria. I believe that the city attorney will say, you cannot charge more than you anticipate the cost for Los Altos lot. Los Altos has a unique situation because we have these 10 parking plazas. And they're like in gold for a reason, it's because they have a lot of value. You know, we should treat them as being incredibly valuable. And this restriping concept is a novel concept that none of our neighboring towns has. So I don't think we should put in front of them, this is what Menlo Park is doing, this is what Burlingame is doing, this is what... Because the second piece of all of those, those, that, that information needs to say, well, these are all failing, you know, Burlingame is, is, like, it's really not working for these reasons. So even the economist, I think, is irrelevant, because he did not have estimates of what it would cost. And the second part is...
Wait, of what it would cost per space to build a garage?
We don't know what the economist based his 25 to $30,000 recommendation, but it certainly, he didn't have bids in front of him of what restriping would cost, or what we anticipated from the studies that we have, what a garage would cost. So like, that's what you base it on.
Well, and John also had four criteria that an economist he consulted before this meeting said, these are the criteria on which you would make a defensible estimate for the replacement cost of parking.
And super important is, our economist at 25 and 30,000, 25 to 30,000, was suggesting a ratio of two.
Right.
Parking spots for every thousand square feet, regardless of use.
Correct.
But he didn't have any basis for doing that either.
So adopt, sure, adopt 25 to 30,000, if you're gonna adopt two. But you can't justify it.
Right.
So I would send to them the bids that we have before us. If they feel compelled to update them, to be able to get, but the formula, I think, is sound. If we think we can get this many spots from restriping, and this is the cost of restriping, and we think we can get this many spots from a garage, and this is the cost for each of those, for a garage, it's a formula again. And that's what we did, that's what we did where we got the range that was like from 14,000. The highest range we got based on the, the bids we have is $20,006. So if you want to justify charging more, you're gonna have to get new bids.
Well, I hear that, but I had some real concerns about the costing because one of the things that came out at the last meeting was, that was for the restriping and the trees, but you have to underground utilities because it's a code compliance issue. And code compliance is not discretionary. You have to comply with the code. And our building code, our zoning code says, underground the utilities, and that is a lot of money. And I happen to know that there's a major underground piping system running under one of our most treasured parking plazas, and it would be a booger to dig down through. So with that said, if they're going to do exactly what you said and get prices, I think they have to get prices for the whole package, in its entirety of what they're required to do. And it is correct, and you're, as usual, you're right. We need the metric, we need a fact. This is what it costs to restripe, and we need the plan that was drawn that shows the correct ratios of parking versus backup space and aisles to move your car through. We're talking about, in one of them, we were talking about perpendicular parking versus angular parking. Roberta was speaking about if we switch to eight-and-a-half-foot spaces instead of nine. All these things are factors. It has to be a snapshot in time. And indeed, that may not be accurate two years later, but that snapshot in time should be complete, and it should list all of the factors, so that then if there's an escalation clause, which is what we do in construction, you'd say, okay, at this moment, the photograph showed us 20,000. It's now five years later, there's an escalation factor of 8% per year. This is where we are now, whatever the magic number is.
So I'd like to toss a couple extra factors in there that I think need to be included.
Okay.
One would be that, as Renee well raises, that the attorney may have other constraints that cities have to follow, such as specifying what this can be used for, and to make sure that the things that are specified...
In the in lieu fee program.
In the in lieu fee program are actually legally sufficient, whatever that happens to be. And I don't know what that is, I just noted that those kinds of strictures exist. The other is that I think there is some, at least case law, if not legal stricture, that if you're gonna do this, you have to have some either timeframe or practicality where once you've collected the money, you have to actually build something, and...
You have to use it.
You have to use it, and you have to use it for the purpose that you stated. And if, if we were to go 10-year, you know, okay, let's go five years down the road, and now we've got a bunch of money collected and we should do a building, or do a, you know, we've, we've restripped three of the lots, because it turned out that that's what really made sense, and we now have a bunch of more money, and we should build a garage, and the city has no money.
But we don't have to build a garage, right?
And the actual cost of building, I'm just saying, and the actual cost of building the garage is greater than the pot of money we have, because we have specifically, perhaps, perhaps, collected money less than total cost, because we were trying to incentivize development.
And because the intention was that the city would contribute there.
Would the city would contribute, but the city has made no provision for setting aside those funds, and now we need to build this, and we're all in trouble, and our merchants are screaming at us that people can't come downtown and park, and we have no money for building a garage. So I think we have to at least bring to councils' attention that as they're making a decision in their trade-offs of how they're gonna set this fee, if they're actually gonna set it for an incentive purpose where it's less than actual cost for what they realistically expect is gonna happen... they realistically expect is going to happen, then how are they going to fund the city's piece of this?
I don't think they will do that, in my opinion. On the other hand, I think the plan for the in-lufy program should have...
We owe it to them to tell them about that.
Should have pieces that say, and it can be used the following things, because, in fact, it may turn out that they restripe more, yeah, they use that money for more than the three that you talked about, they do the other five.
And have L.A. parking and everything.
And who knows?
And actually, I was going to, one of the things I would like to add to E on the top of page eight, is, and I heard it through some of the discussions at the other meeting, is that the money, again, this is up to the lawyer to confirm or deny, the fees shall be used exclusively to expand or maintain the capacity of downtown public parking resources. Because, I mean, it can't, it doesn't have to be all increasing the supply, we have to maintain it too. So, I think that is it absolutely critical to add.
I don't know that you can legally do that.
Well, that's what I said, the attorney...
Which is exactly what John was saying.
Yeah, I think, my understanding of the way all of this works is that the timeframe that Commissioner Inander brought up, that would be for something like a fee paid through a condition of project approval. Fees like in-lufy fees would go into a designated fund, something like a, gosh, name escapes me right now, the, an enterprise fund, where the monies collected are to be spent on a specific purpose. And then, through the establishment of that fund, you indicate what the fees can be used for. So, maintenance of parking, expansion or enhancement of the parking supply, and so forth.
Because I, you know, if I were king, which I'm not, and we set, we set these fees for incentive purposes, less than the actual cost, then I would advocate that council really ought to be, whenever a project comes through, they need to look at, essentially, what's the deficit of what's coming in versus what we think the total cost is, and find some way to at least contribute part of that to that enterprise fund, or set those funds aside...
Or have matching fees in some way.
In some way, or have some sort of matching something or other.
You're assuming that's, we're going to have a problem, when we may not have a problem.
Well, I'm looking at, and I hate to challenge our two resident experts who have the courage to sit through all of this and help us so well, but the idea that one of the ways you deficit fund this is that you're going to recover it in more taxes, has not turned out to be the case on First Street. We have absolutely no evidence that we have more sales tax as a result of the changes that have been made on First Street. So...
Yeah, but let's look at it from the big picture. What you're saying is, you and it are looking at the worst possible case scenario, and that's okay, because it is part of good government to prepare for the bad, rainy day.
I'm not saying worst case, I'm trying to pick a realistic case.
Well, I mean...
A realistic case.
It is a possibility, and in fact, it is at council's discretion. They could do matching funds. When a project came in, they could, as Sally said, they could put in forty percent or ten percent. They could do a token, even if it was that the money was set aside, so that there was a growing fund, and the fund is being invested, all those good things. But with that said, I'm going back to the original question, which is, do we set, we actually have a range that starts at fourteen and goes up to thirty-five, depending on who you're looking at. Is there a metric that...
I don't know that it's so much a metric as a policy decision.
Right.
That is, do you want to charge something that constitutes what your best estimate of a hundred percent cost? And if you don't, how much of a discount do you want to offer?
I understand that. Now, you had two questions, Roni?
I had two separate points. One is, I think it's worthwhile to have the city attorney weigh in on...
Oh, has to.
The, the undergrounding of the...
Utilities?
Utilities, because I think, in at least the memo that we received, there was a suggestion that we, that it would not be required. So, that would be interesting to have...
But it's also a po, and it's also a policy.
Well, it's not, for me, it's the building code.
Yeah.
And you know, there's, it's like there are no variances to the laws of physics. There are variances to zoning codes, but there are not variances to the building code. So, the question is, is this a PG&E thing that's going to come in? I don't know. But, John, that's the question.
And I would also say that, in the same, you know, discussion where we are highlighting, like, the worst-case scenario, I think that it should be noted that in our estimate that we got to, the twenty thousand, we didn't include any of those immediate opportunities to create parking at a negligible amount, like the...
The low-hanging fruit.
The low-hanging fruit. And we also didn't include what I would call, sort of, intermediate opportunities, which I think would also be relatively inexpensive, but would require, like, time and effort. And that is, the identifying the spaces that are underutilized, the large amounts of spaces that are underutilized in our larger triangle, and determining if we can enter into releases for those spaces at significantly less than twenty thousand. So, the idea that we would even ever build the garage, we may not need to, because by the time we do the restriping, or start entertaining these leasing options, the use of cars is may dramatically change, and we may decide that it's not an investment that we need to make.
And change the white dot program, and encourage employees to use it.
But we don't know enough about what's going to happen in the future.
We don't, and I don't agree, but I agree, we don't know what's going to happen, but I also have, I feel strongly, we shouldn't assume we need a garage. I a hundred percent agree with that.
And I'm not saying we should, that we need a garage. I'm saying that the council, at some point, needs to lay out their vision of what this fee is about, what it's trying to accomplish, and also, the reason you do that is, so as you go down the road, if things change, and this is something Roni has said over and over, that you need to come back and say, okay, you know, kind of, these assumptions, we made this model based on this set of assumptions, but reality is, that assumptions one and four aren't working out that way. It's going this way instead, and therefore, let's adjust our model.
Yeah.
But you have to have a model based on...
I'm with you.
All the factors and all the assumptions.
If I might add something?
Oh, definitely.
I think the commission's at a little bit of a disadvantage right now, because you don't know what the vision for the downtown is going to be.
You're right.
What that's, what the adoption of that vision is going to look like. So, one suggestion, rather than coming up with a recommendation to the city council on an amount, because the fee will be set by a resolution of the council, you might consider recommending to the council that the fee should be established in a manner or at an amount that furthers whatever the adopted downtown visioning is.
Thank you, John.
I just want to, I agree with that conceptually, John. I just am concerned that if we don't give them more of a model with the factors laid out, they're going to flounder.
Well, and you know what?
No, you know what? I don't think so. The city council has enough opinions that they will...
They will make a decision, I have no doubt, whether we will agree with what their decision is.
Right.
I can speak to. But I, I can say that...
I wouldn't try and guess at.
Yeah. I think so, John, I think that makes perfect sense, because you deliberately, last time, said, this should be, the amount should be set by resolution, because we want it to have the flexibility...
Right.
If the formula changes. And I think this actually puts that right in that same department, where we're saying, these are the assumptions that were made, and once we have the city attorney covering it, to make sure that what they're doing is in compliance with everything it needs to be in compliance, then they can make the policy decision based on whether the goal that we are saying, which is, we want to encourage development, but we don't want to give away the baby with the bathwater, they can then make their decision. I would like to move on to the last item of the four that we left over. Yes, sir?
I just might confirm, that's the way you want to carry that forward, the recommendation?
Well, because my perspective is, we should say, we need a parking Lufy, the council needs to decide how much that is.
And our advice, as we're saying to you, is, in this discussion, we have learned the following things.
Right.
These are the goals that we see are, the goals that we see, it needs to include the downtown visioning.
And these are the fact, these are the factors that we think are important for you to look at.
Exactly.
Right, and let them decide.
And let them set out a vision and a model, and a fee to go with it.
Okay.
Exactly.
So, I'm a minority, because I would put forward the amount that the...
Mm-hmm. I don't think we know enough to do that, right?
I don't think...
In the resolution.
Yeah, I would do it because, provided we also change the ratios, because they kind of go hand in hand.
Well, that's my piece. So, we're now down to the ratios we worked at last time. The only one that was left, sort of, hmm...
What page were we on?
I'm on page five.
Can you pull that up, John, for us on the, you had that page?
Page five?
Yeah.
Of the...
The ratios?
Of the resolution?
No.
You're talking about this?
Right here.
This one. What it is, how Los Altos parks now?
Okay.
Okay. And, geez, here in the memorandum, it's on this one. Thank you for putting it on the overhead. Okay. Sanity check. Is this the one?
You want this one? Is that weird?
Yes, what's the front?
What is this from last week?
Ah, Agenda Report Items. No, I have that. I'll have to find it.
No, it's not in our...
No, it was in the slide deck.
Powerpoint?
Part of the slide deck.
Okay. Hmm. Well, the one that I knew, I will find it eventually, the one that I knew that was in question, and I think it was I who brought it up, was the office parking. And then, John gave us this parking requirement date of select cities, and ours is, no, but I was looking, because in the parking requirement date of select cities, it's based on one space per a certain number of gross floor area, and I wanted it to be in the same format, and I did, and ours is, like, three hundred and four hundred, and these seem to be lower consistently across the board. So, let me find where I put it on mine, because I did the math. I apologize, too many pieces of paper. In any case, so our current parking ratio for offices...
So, are you saying that the current parking ratios for all things that are listed here are more than what there should be, because considering, because that's what I'm looking at?
Well, I was looking only at office, and at this moment, it's...
Two-point-five?
Per thousand.
All right.
Right? And I looked at the parking requirements for select cities, and, for example, Burlingame on the first page is one space for three hundred, so that means that there are three-point-three spaces per thousand, which means it's higher than ours.
Mm-hmm.
And I went through all of them, and in fact, as I had said at the meeting intuitively, it turns out factually that we are considerably lower in our requirement for office parking than most people on the peninsula, some of which probably, I think, are less relevant than others, because we are not a major city, but Los Gatos is very close to us in general tenor. In fact, they don't have a train, they have a small, compact historic downtown, they have a peripheral, heavy and more developed retail and commercial area, and they are one parking space for each two-hundred-and-fifty. So, that means four per thousand for offices.
And it's actually slightly different, because our ordinance is all based on net. If you look at that, it's all based, mostly based on gross.
Ah.
And, and it's a huge difference, and, you know, net, I'm not even sure is really defined, like, I think there's a lot of...
It's not. It was a problem for me.
And so, I was thinking that maybe the better metric would be to move it to gross.
Okay, so that's the first question.
Or at least, but maybe there's a reason why you went to net, and so, I just wanted to ask.
Well, there's a lot of stuff in the report about why they wanted to go to net, and what they wanted to exclude, but then I still don't think we have a definition, do we?
He was Johnson's.
Well, that was the recommendation of the committee to go that way.
Right, but did you write a definition of net? Because they proposed one of a sort, kind of, sort of.
Don't think I did that.
But I don't know that it's in here, of what it gets excluded, and I think we were still kind of...
If you look at the big packet that we have, it's that, it's in there.
It was, because it was in your original proposed, it was in the proposed ordinance that the...
We currently have square footage.
Yeah, it was in the proposed ordinance that the committee generated, but it's not in what we got from staff.
So, it's in the... Gosh, I have it as attachment.
But the attachments all changed.
No. Yeah, I've got it as attachment B, draft recommended parking codes, Los Altos Parking Committee. And then, unfortunately, though, it's not numbered, but this, it's the section...
Let me see the front cover of that.
So, this is what it looks like on the front.
No, no. The front cover of the whole document, because I'm trying to find it in my bundle.
December seventh.
Okay, the December seventh.
The December seventh packet.
And then, attachment B, and then, yeah, I'll tell you.
Yeah, it's the, it's the committee's recommended draft.
Seven, eight, it's after, it's page nine.
I don't have that.
December seventh.
So, really, page eighteen, really.
Because that's one I didn't pick up.
April, there, draft.
Yes, right. And, you're looking for the definition, right?
Definition. Rummage, rummage, rummage. And where is it in here, Roni? I'm going to call a ten-minute recess while we rummage for papers and take a small break.
Okay, this is what it looks like.
I know, which section is it? What numbered section is it?
Flip nine pages.
Really close to getting through today's meeting. Yes, I think so. Really close. And...
I motioned that we conclude today's meeting.
No, no. We have to get through this.
I do have a couple of things that are...
I'm joking.
Not within the broad categories that you're talking about. Since this is a draft or input, I would like to get a little touch on.
Well, you know, I had not forgotten. What I was trying to get through were the big four. And then I was going to say, and I'm sure we have other little bitty ones. Aside from the fact that Anita pointed out that entire section didn't, wasn't in good English. I mean, we're not even going to get through the wordsmith.
Yeah, no, I'm even going to try.
Okay, so I have not, I have not precluded other things. I just was really focused on this. Okay. If we're all back...
I have a question.
Wait, wait, then I'm going to reopen the meeting. Everybody turn your mics on again. We are back in session.
I have a question. In the draft ordinance provided by the Parking Committee, at 1,474, 200 Development Standards for Off-Street Parking and Truck Loading Spaces, Sub-Q, it says, "For purposes of calculating parking requirements for uses other than office, net square footage shall mean the total horizontal area in square feet, that's gross square feet on each floor, including basements, but not including the area of stairwells, elevators, elevator fire-rated lobbies, mechanical electrical rooms, mechanical shaft enclosures, and restrooms." My question is, what's an elevator fire-rated lobby?
I can tell you what I think it is.
I can.
It's the safety zone. Come on up.
Right.
Yeah.
It's exactly what it is to, when you do, at office building, they have a, every city, and in fact, there's a state zoning code, John probably knows it better than I do, that requires a, um, uh, certain amount of space. I'm trying to remember the exact ways to find, John, do you know?
It's the safety zone.
It's an area that has construction techniques that provide for a higher rated fire safety level to provide opportunities for more people to be able to escape a building. So it's like a lot...
So does every building, every building has some space that's defined as this?
Well, when the elevator opens, if it doesn't open to the outside, and none of them ever does...
Right.
It has to open to an area that will keep the fire from getting to it so the people in it can get out.
So every commercial building's going to have some of this, pretty much, probably most, if there's more than one floor?
If it has an elevator.
If it has an elevator.
We'd have to double-check our building.
Okay, so then my next question, which David probably will have to answer also, is when it says, "For purposes of calculating parking requirements for uses other than office..."
So what is it for offices? Because that was the one that I had the most trouble with.
So is this is for buildings that aren't offices?
No, it's building use, if it's...
Doesn't it go?
I, because I think what you're trying to say is, "For purposes of calculating parking requirements for offices, net square footage shall exclude these things." But that's not how this is written. So it was written really weird.
It was a draft.
It was a draft, I understand, it was a draft.
So, but this gets to your original question, which is, gets back to my original question, which is, is the parking ratio that John has on the screen for offices correct for our town? And this is based on net square footage? No, this is, this one is based on...
Net.
Net square footage, okay, thank you.
But I don't think there's anything on here that's current existing. None of these are the current real. These are all the recommendations.
Right.
None of these are the, represent what the current is.
He told us that last time.
The current recommenda, the current standard for parking is 3.3 spaces per thousand, or one space...
On gross or on net?
That would be, there's an... We, our ordinance is worded a little strangely as well. I think it excludes, like, chase, mechanical chases, and equipment areas.
But not anything about lobbies?
It's not lobby.
It's the elevator, it's fire-rated lobby, but I think that that is discretionary. You decide what you are or not going to include. The question, I think, usually from a real estate point of view, is it rentable? And if it's not rentable, everybody pays a little bit in their rent as a share towards that common space.
But, right, but I think if we're going to say, "These are based on net," we have to be able to define what...
I agree.
Gets netted out.
I agree, but we don't have to do that tonight.
No, it's just a hole that we have to fill somewhere.
But that begs the question I keep coming back to, which is, currently, we're asking 3.3, 3.33 spaces per thousand square feet, net, undefined what net is. Proposed is lower. And when I looked at the document that was provided for tonight, that's kind of, meh. I don't know if we should lower it. That's my point. I don't think we should lower it. That's my minority opinion.
I don't think we should lower it either. And my rationale is that in the CDM Smith report, the estimated actual usage for office is 3.61, including both, well, all parties. And then if you presume a minus 20% for efficiency from being in the downtown parking plazas, so that where what's recommended here for downtown parking in the district would be 2.0, when you take 20% off 3.6, I think you get to 2.9. So what they're saying is, the reality at the time they did their study, their best estimate was the reality for the downtown parking district was 2.9. So for me, going down to two, I think, is not a good idea.
I concur.
For 2.5.
No, for, in the downtown, making the downtown with the, where you're saving the 20%.
Ah, sorry.
And Sally, what do you think, this, I'm going to take, go around the dais on this one.
So you're asking me what I feel about the 2.0...
Yes.
Versus either the current or 2.5.
Which would be before you take out the...
Yeah. So again, I, I would like to hear, I think, Mr. Ruckus, some perspective that he went...
Sure.
And I just would really like to hear that, since all the rest of the perspective has been helpful.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for the compliment. I want to point out one very important factor. When the current code was adopted, it was adopted on flawed data. The city staff at the time supplied FER and PERS with inaccurate data on the study. The study actually came out to a parking ratio for office of 2.57. Mark Rogie and I have said that over and over and over again, and that's why I put it in the memorandum. We had a city council that adopted the FER and PERS report. The FER and PERS report, the engineering itself, was accurate. They used inaccurate data because they were given a, they were given, they were studying areas where this staff left out an entire building. And they left out, in two different instances, they literally left out a building. They just gave them the wrong data.
So David...
And so we've corrected, when we did the corrected FER and PERS data, it was 2.57. And so we rounded that down to 2.5.
So David...
Which was a 3% rounding down.
What you're saying is that the two, um, spaces per thousand square feet is incorrect. It should be 2.5.
No, what I'm saying is that the current code of 3.3 was based on incorrect data.
I'm sorry.
In, in the FER and PERS report, not only did they use...
Wait, I'm sorry, I don't see 3.3.
Well, because this is what's recommended. As Anita pointed out, what's...
Last time, we, last time...
Today's code is not on this chart.
Today's code is not in the code, on the chart. Now, number two, if you look at the FER and PERS report, the one thing that was very strange is they said, "Well, we could adopt the 3.0. We know that many other cities are at 3.3, so we'll go to 3.3." They sort of went off the page and just ignored the fact they were supposed to do a report on Los Altos and sort of flew it up to 3.3. So not only was it the wrong data, but it was, there was just this sort of flip that they did for some strange reason. And I think it was because of the current, the city manager, the person who was in John's seat at the time, frankly.
Well, but...
But that's, that's all, water under the bridge.
Okay, does that...
The other thing I wanted, one other thing I wanted to point out is that because of the rents in a Palo Alto, or a Los Altos, or a Menlo Park, of four and a half to $6 a square foot, there cannot be the big, either the call centers or the tech startups that have engineers with the, with the sawhorses, with, you know, the doors, with the two, the sawhorses underneath them, and with the headphones on. They can't afford the rent. You can't squeeze, you can't be paying that kind of rent. The people that want to office here are financial planning, private equity, venture funding...
White collar professionals.
White collar professionals.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I am ready to, you had asked me a question, and I'm ready to make a comment. And I, you know, I really feel that every time we have a question, there's a whole, you know, stack deep of rationale from the Parking Committee. They've done the work. I, I know that when we are watching council on the dais, and they do things on the fly, and, you know, we feel that we've done the work, and it's not reflected in the conversation, it doesn't feel that great. So what I'm saying in a long-winded way is I'm going to support the recommendation of the Parking Com- Commission.
Thank you.
Committee, whatever they were.
Thank you, and the recommendation is lower?
Yes, it is. And I am cognizant that it is, and I'm cognizant of the, the anxiety that that might bring about. But I do feel that that explanation helped clarify.
Okay, Alex?
I would concur.
Okay. Roni?
I concur too. I mean, when I look at the corrected, I, I, I would have, when I look at what they corrected, and they break down the average peak, we're still below the 2.5 at the average peak. And based on the parking ratio recommendation, it would have been closer to 2.23.
Okay, are you on?
Yes. So I think that they are still within the range of being reasonable to conservative.
Okay, Mike?
My feeling is, after reading all the documentation, it's thrown a dart, a dartboard. And these numbers are as good places to be as any other place.
Okay, good. So there is a consensus, I would say, that this should stay where it is.
A majority, not a consensus. Because I do not agree.
Okay. No, do I. But that's, but there's a majority, so there's, there's an answer to that one. Those are the four big points. Now, I would like to open the discussion for other things that didn't make the high level of, "These are things we need to discuss," that disturbed people along, as they were reading through this draft ordinance, where they would like either explanation, or correction, or clarification, whatever it is. So Sally, why don't you start, because you have a good one?
With that, so, um...
I only ask, give us the, the reference of the point.
Yes, yes, I'm trying to look at where to start. So some of these, so page five, and speaking about offices, so F, page five, F, is talking about offices, including medical offices. And then G defines a dental office. And then H defines a medical clinic. And G and H are at the same number, so it doesn't really make much difference. But I kind of wondered what the definition was that defined a medical office that distinguished it from a medical clinic or a dental office that's at a different parking ratio. Because that, to me, I couldn't justify, I couldn't understand what the difference between a medical clinic would be from a medical office.
I was going to defer to you, John, because I know we have a specific definition for the clinic.
Yeah.
A medical office is an office that is occupied by doctors that might do walk-in appointments or just exam room appointments. A medical clinic offers more extensive medical procedures. They might do some outpatient surgeries, have some other elements that have more employees and so forth in them.
Okay, so you're comfortable that this is standard to differentiate between the parking requirement being greater for the dental offices and medical clinics than it is for a medical office?
I think between the medical clinic and the medical office, there should be a distinction. But I would suspect that a dental office should have similar parking requirements to a, to a medical office.
Well, you, but right now, in this ordinance, it has the dental office and the medical clinic
Right.
Are similarly parked, or requirements are. So that's why I wasn't, none of that quite held up to me, so I didn't know what the rationale was. So maybe you need to look in. If you think dental office should actually be more like medical office, and just medical clinic be at the five per square thousand, I mean, if there's some data points or benchmarks that you could show us.
Did you just mean dental clinic? Like, this is a dental office where you're going in for procedures?
I, I'm just going by what the committee recommended here, and their wording was dental office. It seems like a medical office would have more patients go through it than a dental office.
I, I have no idea how we can make that assumption. I mean, dental offices have lots of, and a, a medical clinic, I mean, to me, they're kind of all, especially in modern practice, a lot of that goes in all the same places. So I'm kind of wondering if medical office, dental office, and medical clinic are really kind of all the same animal.
Actually, the medical clinic, I disagree. They're, the outplays and procedures and the semi-surgical suites, they take up more time. I think what we're looking at when we had the discussion about this, I hope someone else was sitting on commission at that point with me, is we talked about the kinds of services and the speed, what the turnover was.
Right.
And that wasn't a number we could quantify, except we could say that, for example, you spend an hour at the dentist on a standard exam day, but the doctor might be...
Or something.
Or, or a psychiatrist. I mean, there were chunks of time, whereas a clinic was much more extensive.
Okay, so, so clinic then should be, sounds like five per thousand. But dental office may actually be in the F category with office, including medical office.
Yes.
It might be, including medical office and dental office, should be at that two and a half per thousand.
I would compare with that.
So going to a regular doctor's office is not medical clinic?
No, a medical clinic, if you think of it, it's more like...
Like urgent care or something like that.
Yes, it's the sort of thing where you will be there for a block of time.
But if you come to a dental office and get your teeth cleaned, or you get your cavities filled, you're there in and out in an hour.
I think the dental clin, I mean, the medical clinic actually has a definition in our zoning code.
Yes, our zoning has a...
Has to do for size of the building.
So the, the Los Altos Oaks, Altos Oaks, that new Pamp thing, that's a medical clinic.
Exactly.
Okay, and so it had a parking requirement, all right. So then the real, the only question then is, I can buy all that. Is, does dental office fit in with F, with, for office, including medical office and dental office?
Right, it should be more F than more H.
Probably.
And we should have the definitions next time when we're looking.
Yeah, so that, that's the question. Let's not labor that further. And then similarly on page, where is it? And then similarly on page, where is it? Oh, I guess it's actually that same page. But looking at requirements such as I, J, K, L, it, it, it goes back to the, sort of the old way of combining square footage and employee counts. And I just really think that we should get away from that. And I was surprised to see these employ, because, you know, you're really requiring, so if you had a change of use in the building, then the employees' numbers change and the parking should change. You know, so I really think we should get away from employee counts being-
So what you're talking about is J, K, and L?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, yes.
J, K, and L, not I?
Yeah, and L and M.
Not I, you're right. I had my, yeah, so J, K, L, M, and there might be some more on the next page.
And how do you measure number of employees in the morning and the afternoon?
The hearse, yeah, N.
I don't think anybody's arguing about that thing.
O.
Well, we could, we could just go along and say, would you look through?
All the-
See where you can get rid of employees.
References to employees.
Yeah, we don't want the parking requirement to be based on some projection of number of employees that has little to no bearing on reality, probably.
Because they probably park on the street.
Or can change.
Yes. Then on page six.
They have one.
I had a question about number six, which says-
Wait, wait, page?
Page six.
Thank you, turn to the page.
Number six, no credit for stalls above the code requirements for the use. So I just wanted to understand why. Do you have that same one too? So why wouldn't we incent more parking? So right now, if they provide, I mean, no one will provide more parking.
If you provide more parking than you need, we're not going to give you any credit for it. It's item six.
You're just going to provide it because you won't. I mean, right? I mean, Alex, what do you think?
It was the same question I had.
Same question.
Yeah, me too. I was like, huh?
Uh huh. So six doesn't make any sense. There has to be, I would think we'd want to have some way to thank them, reward them and send them. So that's a question we don't have to answer tonight, but I think we have at least three of us puzzled, right?
I'm just not sure how it works.
I don't know either.
How do you give a credit for something that's greater than what the requirement is? It's, okay, the requirement's this, did they meet the requirement?
Maybe it's a public benefit. I mean, I don't know, but yeah.
I couldn't figure out how it applied.
Right.
Didn't make sense to me.
Okay, so something about that. And then on page seven, this did come up earlier tonight, but on C, which is sort of just in the bottom half of the, the beginning of the bottom half of the page, C, payment of fee. So again, we had a public comment, and last time we took out the two other options other than lump sum. I think, I, I, last time, actually, wanted to, you know, felt that we should have kept those in, or at least, at least one of them. But I really think that we should have the discussion, and I think that's a major item, about whether we keep it at lump sum or, again, giving feedback, put in the other option.
And I think that needs to be scrubbed with the attorney.
I was the one that brought that up.
Yeah.
And I've been thinking about it since then. I think one of the things that, I think the preference should be, I think we're really tying city council's hands by doing it this way. And that, but the preference should be to get the money upfront. And so maybe the middle ground is to say that the city council can adopt payments over time in exchange for public benefits.
Oh, I would oppose that. I think we ought to not be trading public benefits for anything. It isn't, nothing but mischief in this town.
So, or, I mean, I do, there was a, a financial incentive to do the lump sum.
Yeah, I can go there.
And so I think it was fair enough, the way it was originally written, which was, you know, the lump sum of X, again, let's, 20,000 or whatever it was. And then there was the, there were two other options. And, and one added up to 22,000 or 25,000 if you paid for it over 10 years. And then the third option was like a lease or something.
Or maybe there's a discount for the lump sum. You can go at it two different ways.
So anyway, I would like to, I personally, and that's what the discussion is, I would prefer to see the three options as they were, as originally proposed.
And I would like the attorney to weigh in on how to handle and the, and the risk, the potential risk to the city of taking something other than lump sum.
Well, that was, I think, the point that we brought up last time, is that I understood the point that it was a hardship if a restaurant was coming in and you wanted a $20,000 upfront on top of everything else, but, per space. But if you don't get it and then they go belly up, you are holding the bag.
Only if it's not replaced by another restaurant who then picks up the bag and continues to pay it. Because a restaurant has the most onerous parking requirements. So if a restaurant is then replaced by retail, well, if they had to expend that money upfront, they would have, probably, it would be one of the reasons why they go under. Because they spent too much.
But looking at that, I just think, looking at that way, the whole thing is not realistic, right? Because if you do a build-to-suit or whatever, like, you're not going to amortize the entire building cost over, you know, 10 years, whatever it is, right? So, and also, so the landlord's not going to pass on the full cost to the tenant and have the tenant pay. If the tenant's got a two-year, five-year, whatever that lease pay. Like, it's really a landlord liability. The landlord's paying it. They can figure out what they need over what period of time and pass that on to the tenant. So I don't think it's really the tenant coming out of pocket that's paying 100% of that, of that fee.
I think one of the few examples we actually have of a parking and loo working in our town is the Los Altos Grill.
Yeah.
And they're doing it based on that concept, at least, so I'm, I'm, I'm open to it. I think if we want to see restaurants, I think everybody wants to see restaurants. I think a landlord will pass those costs on to a restaurant. I don't think they're going to hold it back.
Mike, shall we add more, more options to the how you pay in lieu?
No.
You're saying no?
I think, wait.
Lump sum only?
I think that, that it- I think we need to have the city attorney speak his piece and then decide from there.
So plug it back in, but then have the city attorney review.
Yes, with the original plugin, okay. And then I'm almost done, I think, or maybe, oh, yeah. This, top of page eight, the very first sentence, and I said this before, so you probably already have it, and the attorney needs to weigh in. On in lieu parking fees shall be used exclusively to expand or maintain the capacity. Again, so what, what can they be used for, the question?
Can I add one more thing to that since you were there?
Oh, yes.
And maybe at the end, which may include but are not limited to?
Yeah. Yep, that's a good one. And the last thing is just a, on page nine, B, that's really the second paragraph, that should just be the Planning Commission, not Planning Transportation. So that was a minor cap. Okay.
I have three or four.
We're going down the dais.
Okay. So on page five. This looks like this intends to-
Item?
Item, I'm sorry, item B.
B as employee.
On, at the very top of the page, second item.
Ah, that one.
When we're doing credits. This is, the issue, I think, arises because we don't know if this applies to things outside or inside the OPD.
Wait a minute, no, no, this particular section is CN, CD, CDR3, CRS, OAD, CRS, OA, and CT districts.
Right.
So we need to-
So none of these are part of the original parking district? I think so. CD is-
Which participate in-
So it's 1474-100 we're looking at?
These, those, those zoning codes, some of them are found in the OPD and some of them are found outside the OPD.
Correct.
Correct?
Are you talking about item B up above?
Okay, yes.
Item B up above.
I'm talking, beginning at, so, beginning at the bottom of the, of the, of page four. Those properties which participate in the public parking district shall be, and it has the credit.
Right.
The question is, what do we do with, if we expand the, and I guess maybe this is the whole hole that hasn't been dealt with, are we going to allow for a buy-in and expansion of the OPD to the perimeter? And if we are going to allow that, then there's a whole section missing. And one of the big questions would be, what is their buy-in? And what is the credit they would get if there was further development? Because 3.5 is predicated on what the on-street parking is in the OPD. We don't know what that is on the perimeter. So we don't want to just copy this over for possible use outside the original parking district. That's just a point. I don't know what we do with it, but that's a point. On page six, number eight, numbered eight in the long list, public benefits may reduce parking requirements subject to approval of the city council. I think we should not have that in here. This is part of what got us in the bucket we were in that caused us to have a committee and that we're trying to create something so we avoid those kinds of mischiefs. And I would delete number eight. I don't know if you want to consider that or not, Madam Chair.
Well, I, I would like to say that I believe that we have made our goal to make it transparent and fair and consistent in the code. And what this does is, it basically puts us back into the la-la land of if you come here with enough of a carrot on the end of the stick, we'll do it. So as a policy, as a recommendation to city council, I would say that this should not be in. I agree with you. On the other hand, it does tie their hands. If they want, if a project comes in and offers significant benefits and there is no exception possible in the code, then you can't do that. And so I am of two minds here because it is basically in contradiction to what our goal was across the board. But on the other hand, there are no exceptions. And you have to have, provide for some exception when something comes along. The parallel-
Can you do it through a variance?
No.
In a, in a commercial?
No.
That's my question. Can they, without this written, can they still actually seek a variance? And so they're providing them with a benefit.
Because my thought is, we should eliminate it. And then if city council decides whatever, they're going to do whatever.
Okay.
I mean, right now, our code says you have to park X, Y, and Z for these uses.
Right.
It doesn't say this is public benefit. But yet, when people come and get variances.
But a variance is different because a lot of the times what we're talking about is not a variance. We're talking about-
Exceptions.
Exceptions.
We're actually rarely talking variances.
And it's because a variance is a state thing. It's a state mandate and it has certain requirements. You have to be able to prove from a state basis. And it's not applicable pretty much here. I mean, that's-
So Phoebe, if this item eight wasn't there, could the city council say, okay, somebody comes up and says, you know what, we're going to do this?
We'll build you a garage.
Exactly.
Yes, I think they have the right to do whatever. And in the end, they have the right to do whatever they want, even if it's not in here.
Because it's not in the code, they can do whatever they want.
They can still do whatever they want.
And that's a question for the attorney, because I think that's true. Is if eight's not there, it doesn't really matter. Because they can still do that. Yeah, so we want to know that.
Well, that opportunity exists through a development agreement. You can come forward and propose a development agreement and say, we are going to provide the city these
Things, right?
in return for, meaning a reduction.
So we don't need to state it in the code.
That's right. Then take it out.
Yep.
Alex, you okay taking it out?
Yep.
Okay, the next one that I have, and John, there's all sorts of drafting errors in this that I'm not going to go through.
Okay, give me your notes.
Yeah.
In fort, on page eight, 14 dot 74 dot 210. And I'm going to say that I'm incredibly stupid here. But is it really clear when you say at the last sentence, parking stalls shall be designated by using double striping that is one foot in width and 16 feet long? Because to me, what's, what, what's one foot in width? Each stripe, is it the double striping that's supposed to be one foot? What, what is-
That language could use some clarification.
I was just like-
It is double striping.
If it's been referred to a graphic.
How does that work?
It's the double stripe.
Right, each stripe is a foot within-
They're within a one-foot zone.
Exactly.
Outside edge of the-
Yeah, outside edge to outside edge of the double stripe. I mean, anyway, I just, and, and maybe, you know, a, a traffic engineer would just laugh at me because any damn fool would know that, but I don't happen to, so I'm a damn fool.
Is there a particular color?
But no, the bottom line is, we want it totally transparent. We want it so if someone is opening the code, the city is closed and they're looking online and they're reading this thing and trying to figure out how many spaces they're going to have to provide, do they have room to do it? Now they have the definition. And it says, this is the dimension and there's one-foot strips between them.
Whatever.
Or whatever.
And then the very last thing I have is actually in the draft resolution.
Which we already-
Which we already approved. And it's just a typo I want to point out.
There's a couple, actually.
The.
And you may, yes, the the. Yeah, the the in the second, whereas, second line. It says he where it's supposed to say the.
And that's-
Second whereas, in the second line.
Yeah, I got that one.
Okay.
And I think that same whereas, I think the last parking, I don't think we need that one.
Yes.
You've got parking, both public-
Yes, you don't need the second comma.
Okay, I don't want to sink to commas, guys.
Yes, I don't want, I wasn't going to sink to commas.
Thank you.
I just wanted, the E is, was an error. I'm done.
All right. Next, next happy customer.
Number, page four, 1474-080. On C, the last clause, it says, subject to approval of the city council on a recommendation by the Planning Commission. And so I guess, I just want to make sure, maybe we should delete this
And so I guess, I just want to make sure, maybe we should delete this because if we don't recommend, does that preclude them from approving?
You're right, it doesn't.
I don't think we need on a recommendation by the planning commission.
I don't think you need subject to approval of the-
But-
These used projects may substitute non-registered parking spaces for visitors in use of blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Period.
Fine. Are you just, are you trying to say we should have a look at it, but it doesn't matter how we vote, they still have to approve it? Or you don't think we should have a look at it? Because this is mandating that we have a look at it in the way I read it.
I think it's not mandating that we look at it. I think it's, what it's doing is saying that if we don't recommend it, then city council can't approve it.
So what's the intention?
Which I don't think is the intent, but-
Okay.
Yeah, because I think your intent is that we look at it and then they can do what they want.
What is the intent?
What is the intent?
Good question.
Or you could just put subject to approval, period.
Subject to approval, period. There you go.
That's fine.
That's why I look at it.
But then staff could do, you know, approve it, right?
Well-
Exactly. It doesn't matter.
Well, it'll depend on the project. Some projects will come before you for review and recommendations.
Some won't.
Some will be administrative because-
I don't think you need to be that definitive as to who has to approve it.
And-
And then I could not, on D, the next one, I just could not figure out. I know that this is the exact same way it's written in the current code. I couldn't figure out what we're saying here.
I think this is state.
Quarter parking space per bed. And then is it plus point two per bed? And plus a parking space per family or gathering room?
I think that's family room or gathering room.
I think this is straight out of a state requirement. I could be wrong. I defer to John, but it reads like the state of California. What can I say?
So I just couldn't figure out how we're, you know, put that to a little bit.
The amount of parking is, I took it as an and, the whole thing.
Yeah.
Then-
You should insert the term cumulatively, cumulatively in there.
So fourteen seventy-four one hundred A, top of page five. Hundred percent exempt an amount equal to the parking requirement for the most intensive land uses for up to the first hundred percent of F A R. I'm assuming you mean hundred percent of the most intensive land use for that site? Or overall for whatever district you're in?
Those properties which participate in the public parking district shall be, so-
I know, but A is really confusing.
It starts on, it starts on the bottom of page four, tells you where it is. Those properties which participate in the public parking district shall be-
Exempt.
Exempt for the first hundred percent of F A R.
Which seems kind of strange.
The reason it wasn't stated as the first floor is because what if they want to put a restaurant on the second floor and they somehow had like a open roof deck or something? So that would be the mo, let's say they had retail on the bottom and restaurant on the top and the retail would be five and the restaurant would be nine. We didn't want to penalize them for, they should get one level of the most intensive use credit, even if they flipped.
But I think credit is different from exempt. So maybe, maybe if it was recast as a credit, it might make more sense.
My only question was, is, are we saying it's the most intensive land use that's going to be used on that site? Or just-
Only on that site.
So that's the only clarification that I really needed? I, yeah.
Otherwise, everyone would get restaurant credit.
Exactly.
Yes, no.
I think we'll have to look at the, just looking at the language there as well. If you look at B, the lead-in sentences, those properties which participate in the public parking district shall be, and then B, subsection B says may.
Yeah, there's, this is a drafting problem. There's a number of those.
Yeah, I didn't want to get into that.
Okay.
And actually, this was the other one where we added, and I have noted, added here from our previous discussion, this is outside the O P D.
For E, I didn't understand the rationale for the difference between whether the outdoor seating sits in a public right-of-way or whether it's-
On their property?
On their property. And how that affects parking.
My, my understanding is that if the city wants to encourage outdoor dining in public spaces, then you don't require parking for that type of seating where if it were outdoor dining on the property, that would count towards how parking is, is desired.
Like Forest on First put their outdoor dining on their-
Property.
Property, right? Where they could have actually made their, let's say they could have made their restaurant, interior of their restaurant larger. They elected to use some of that. Whereas like-
Well, I'm thinking Citrilla-
The lingerie is using, you know, the public right-of-way.
Right.
And so if you want to encourage those people to still be able to have outdoor dining, which I think we do, which is so, most of Maine and most of state, they won't, there will be no interior out, there won't be no outdoor dining within the confines of their lot. So if you want to still encourage it, you got to like be more generous.
Okay. Okay, so I think on fourteen seventy-four, we're still on one hun, is it still one hundred? So page six. I think you touched on, Sally, no credit for stalls above the code requirement.
Or some credit for stalls?
But my questions were, I didn't, this is just me, it could be very well-known to everyone else. I didn't understand what it means on number three. What does any stall personally designated mean?
Oh, that's like when you have a V C and they put a stall and they're like, for V C ones' use only. Like that has super little value in a shared, even in their own private space.
Got it, but this is like a known like term, I guess, for, like I just didn't realize.
I don't know if it's like industry standard term, but we were trying to say like, we really don't want people to do that. Like this is for Mr. A and this is for Ms. B.
This is for John Biggs. And that reduces-
Type of office parking.
Got it.
This is planning commissioner's spot.
Or actually in the Palo Alto Underground Garage, the city council members and the mayor have spaces that are designated after 5:00 P. M. on the meeting.
Yeah. I think my last comment is on page eight, fourteen seventy-four two ten. And this is really, I think, maybe more just curiosity, but I didn't understand why we have this exception for whatever is on this drawing that's parking standards exhibit A.
Oh, that's, that's actually part of the existing code and there is, you have the ninety-degree parking spaces and then you have the angled parking spaces. So you have different dimensions for those types of parking.
Got it. Okay, go ahead.
I'm so appreciative of all the like careful reading that you have done. I agree with a lot of it. The only thing I didn't see in here was this idea that we would create a commission that would be the people that continue to refine and drill deep into this, into these parking rules. What are people's thoughts on that? I'd like to see that happen.
I thought we didn't have a consensus that we needed one.
I brought that up last time and didn't, wasn't really greeted with enthusiasm, so.
Right.
But can ask again.
So who will, who do, if you're not interested in that kind of concept, who will do the refining?
The staff.
Or us.
Needs to recommend it or needs to be us or the, or the complete streets as the supporting.
If someone is going to explore the idea of leasing, for example, or alternative, you know, lowering demand in the same way that Gary, who came up with all these really creative ideas of how to reduce demand, who's going to, staff is going to push that stuff forward?
Staff or the commissions or somebody comes up with the idea and they assign it or they contract it out and say, somebody needs to go study this.
Or somebody comes up with that idea and speaks in public comment.
And then it gets agendized for a future meeting.
Exactly.
Right.
I don't think having a commission separated from that is going to be beneficial.
Well, I think the reason it didn't show up on here is because there wasn't enough votes to make it useful. I'm not in support of it because, only because I feel like yet another commission. And I, at the time, I think I said, if you're going to do it, it should be a professional because volunteers do the best they can. I'd like people who know what they're doing, so. Are you okay with, I mean, for me, I've been watching, I've been watching my comments. I feel like I should yell bingo. Oh, you got that one. Oh, you got that one. John, get into the end of it. I'm not going to have to do anything. Mike, do you have anything on these?
No, I agree with everybody else.
Okay, so we have done a very thorough job of going through those issues. John, we left a lot in your lap, in your very capable hands.
My apologies, Madam Chair, but there's one I forgot.
Well, you may, you may come back and do it. Now, what would you like it to be?
It has to do with where they can commission a parking study and it's not clear who can commission the parking study.
Where are you?
Where are you?
I'm trying to find where it is.
And by the way, while Sally looks at that, or Anita, I think we've all done a wonderful job of really reviewing this stuff. It's a lot of information. A lot of information. And we've all taken a part of it and read it and tried to understand it as best as we can. And I want to commend everybody for doing that.
I think, you know, I also think it's amazing.
Yay, group hug.
No, I think it is.
The amount of literature that was commissioned over the years.
Absolutely.
Amount of studies, whether they were accurate or not, the amount of them, the sheer number of trees who gave it all for this.
John, it's on, it's on page six.
Page six.
It's dot one four oh, other issues.
Page six.
Wait, hold on.
One four oh, other uses.
Other uses, excuse me, other uses not specifically set forth in the foregoing sections shall meet the off-street requirement, blah, 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 and recommended by the planning commission and approved by the city council or may complete. And my question was, who may complete?
Oh, the applicant.
I mean, there's, first of all, a sentence isn't a sentence. Because other uses not specifically, not specifically set forth cannot complete anything. Uses can't complete. That's not a sentence.
Applicants for uses, for other uses not-
It's missing a subject.
Applicants.
The applicant.
Yeah. And if it's the applicant-
Applicants for other uses.
Anyway.
Not specifically done.
There's a problem there as to who can do that. Sorry.
All right.
Okay.
I believe this concludes our discussion on citywide parking. I would now like to move to commissioners' reports and comments. And I want to special thank for Anita because when Bahi resigned, it was, of course, her city council meeting.
Yes.
And Anita got the sticky end of the lollipop on this one.
Thank you, Anita, for attending.
You're welcome. And Phoebe had done such a great lead-in at last, the last meeting that I really felt compelled to watch the tape of the meeting that you had-
It was a good one.
Listened, had been reporting on so that I would have a clue what was going to be discussed. And I'm really glad I had that prep because it was, it's a wild one in its own way. The more boring thing is that there was a first reading of the smoking, an increase to the smoking restrictions.
Right.
And they ultimately struck several things from the ordinance as presented having to do with strictures on multi-unit residential.
Right.
So that, yeah, you were, yeah, you were, can, everybody can help me here if I screw this up. The next interesting thing that, so that has to come back for a second reading. But the next interesting thing that happened is that the ordinance on A D U's was remanded to staff. I'm not sure that that's the technical legal term, but for some additional work. It turns out, and this had been said at your meeting, Phoebe, that the city attorney, the current city attorney had not had time to look at it. And two weeks later, he decided he really needed to look at it before they proceed with it. So anyway, it's remanded for him to do some more work and work with John on some things and so on.
And back to the-
That's what I was going to say, then it comes back here, doesn't it?
And then it's going to come to us because although we didn't see it, which I think we all thought we were going to, we're going to get to see it. Are we going to have fun like we did tonight? With respect to accessory structures, it passed pretty much as presented. It will, with the following three considerations that they want, looked at, but those have to come back and get staffed before they can come forward. One, and these are from three different council members. One would be to set a maximum size at eight hundred square feet for accessory structures. One would be to count basement space as part of that limit, which is different from how basements are counted in the main residence.
Does the attorney need to look at that?
And the third is to increase the rear setback from a minimum of five feet to a minimum of ten feet out of recognition that even at five feet, the minimum, the height could be eight feet tall. And there is some very strong sentiment that eight feet, only five feet from the back fence is too big. Too big and too close, and especially when you allow a two-and-a-half-foot eve overhang, then it looks like it's right up against the fence. And so that's to be discussed.
At the point, one of the discussion points was, the mayor pointed out that if you allow an accessory building, whatever characteristics you allow it, it has a hundred percent prob, not probability, ability to turn into an A D U.
Anything, anything that's built in the future as an accessory structure, which otherwise conforms to the other rules that we have, even though it doesn't conform to setbacks for a dwelling, an accessory dwelling unit, it's still convertible to an accessory dwelling unit. And this is, I mean, people are finally starting to, you know, the-
Well, we thought about that.
Well, but the public end, I think the council is just, the nickel's starting to drop.
Well, and there's, there's actually a bifurcation because most of the public that I heard come and talk were very concerned about existing accessory structures for which there is no recourse.
Right.
And so that was an important bifurcation point when the mayor said, whatever we do for new accessory buildings will perforce be potentially a dwelling unit. And so whatever choices we make have to be made with that in the back of our minds.
Right. And that's why they got the big letter that they got presented at your meeting because of people. There are people who finally realized this and the public's going, uh-uh, we don't like this idea.
And, and we were very clear, and they were very clear, that there are limits to what the city can or cannot do based on the state regulations.
But not, not with accessory structures. They have, they could have the right, they absolutely could have the right, for example. They could say all accessory structures have to be built within the building envelope. They could do that if they wanted to.
Right.
But they could, on the other hand, I think the state would have a pretty good case for saying the intention of the whereas is in the beginning of our, of the state regulation is because we have a problem, we are making you do this.
At which point, at which point, I think the city would come back and say, our A D U ordinance, we took off all restrictions on lot size.
I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying that there's, there's one of these-
There's a lot of debate stuff. The lawyers are going to dance on this one.
I thought the mayor also, though, said, because I talked to him like the next day or two, that the same thing, it had also come up here, which is that with the A D U regulations such as they are, yes, a new accessory structure could eventually be turned into an A D U, but nobody's going to purposefully go through a two-step process to do that, so.
And I think a lot of people disagree with that. There are people who believe that people will go through the two-step process because it allows them to build a structure in the setback that they could otherwise not build.
Right. But an eight-foot accessory structure can't be converted to a-
Mike.
But starting at eight feet and going to twelve feet, which you can do and can build that entirely within your otherwise required setback and still then convert it to an A D U, and that's what people are reject, are really reacting to.
And Alex is correct. It was pointed out at the city council meeting that I attended that one council member suggested that they put an absolute limit of eight feet. And someone else pointed out that if they did that, it would never be residential. And you pointed it out in our discussions here in commission. And once again, it was pointed out that there, there's a change in what people understand as an accessory building. Because it used to be the barbecue, it used to be the trellis, it used to-
Or the pool.
Or the pool house, even then.
Or the garden shed.
Or the garden shed. And now there's, what is a tool shed the same as an eight-hundred-square-foot structure?
Right.
And the answer is no. But we don't have a differentiation. And that's, I think you're right, people are becoming very aware of it. Now, I have to say professionally, on a statistical sampling of N equals one, we get a lot of inquiries for accessory dwelling units, but when we actually run the numbers and explain to people how much it's going to cost to build this with all the regulations that you have to comply with irrespective of the zoning code placement, we can show them where they can put it and they can either like it or not like it. But when we start doing that, and this will cost you this much money, we have built two. One was a complete garage conversion where the existing building was a detached garage. It was in Palo Alto, it became a structure. And another one where it was a one-car garage, so it got bigger because it was located well enough to expand it. But we've maybe had two dozen inquiries and we've had two that we actually built.
It won't be a tsunami.
And so this is statistical sampling of one.
And, and have you had any, I mean, like the whole basement, to include that basement square footage?
I would never have anybody want to put a basement.
Right.
And there was, there was discussion at council about whether people can build basements, will build basements, want to build basements, what they use the basements for. It was entertaining, Phoebe.
I know.
Thank you so much.
In Palo Alto, where the water tower is relatively high, you never get basements. The reason a basement even becomes a possibility for us is because we have a better kind of geographic substructure. Does anybody have any future agenda items they would like to put on? John, do you have anything?
Just to let you know that we're going to bring the parking ordinance back to you on your meeting of April the eighteenth. The meeting of April the fourth.
Has been canceled because of the Monterey meetings for commissions.
I was curious, is staff going to be at the Monterey?
Yes, Zach and I are going to be there.
Who is actually going? I know you are. Okay. And anybody else from staff?
Uh, just Zach and myself.
Nice to you.
In that case-
What's the process for filling the empty spot we've got?
Yeah.
It's not us.
That's a good question. I know that the city clerk is planning for it. I don't know if-
They have to advertise.
They have to advertise and then they go to city council and blah, blah, blah. It will be three months.
Their next round of recruitment or not. I'll get together with him and find out.
Because they just finished a round, right?
Yeah, they just finished.
They appointed a zillion people for commissions. I didn't report on that.
It'll be three months.
Okay.
Eating clothes.